But once going to start. Probably will not be a first. Couldn't ride my bike. I did my. Got my mile run and you'll stretch out. You still didn't get back to comment?
Yeah.
It's my. Warner's coming. Good luck with that.
We're not recording this time.
Be out there.
Great.
Yeah, go for it, Rob. Thanks.
Okay, um, how's everybody doing this evening?
Fine.
Very excited to talk about budget. Favorite. So, um, just in kind of looking at what I've done in turn. Past and with the town and looking at the town's budget and such. I'd like to get a little bit of a framework around the process that we're going to go through. What to expect over the next really couple of months and then. And then really work with you guys to really understand some of the priorities so that we can build that in as we're building the budget. Cause you don't want to get to the end of a budget and be like, oh no, we need to scrap it and start over. But the big piece is that starting off with the schedule. A schedule, uh, it kind of sent around a schedule that, um, basically we have two deadlines. One being October fifteenth is when we have to submit our budget to the state, a draft budget. And so that rolls up into all the state, state accounting and such. And then by December thirty first, we have to have our final budget submitted to the state. As much as I love working and getting everybody's attention in December. I was going to think, uh, I wanted to propose a discussing priorities tonight. So that we can understand how to frame the budget. Spending the basically the two sessions in September. Going through kind of the big ticket items, which is personnel cost and capital. That makes up about seventy percent of your budget and everything else is just kind of incidental. Like, do we increase this a little bit or should we adjust this? Looking at an October fifth vote on a draft budget. Submitting it by the fifteenth and then looking at a November sixteenth before the holidays really are kicking off. Doing a final vote on a budget. And trying to get this information to you in October, November, so that we can fine tune some, uh, some of our assumptions. But in looking at prior year's budgets and kind of the ten year projections. There's really not a ton of variance. Usually we really underestimate the revenues and. Overestimate some of the big ticket expenses and it all comes out in the wash. And so, uh, there's been a lot of guidance going around, but I, I look at it and go. If we're arguing whether sales tax should be, should go up five percent, you know, in terms of revenue or four percent. The numbers make a difference, but the arguing about it and the formulas for it are. Kind of guy go. Garbage in, garbage out, and you just kind of go, all right, this is where it sits. Uh, and it's, everybody's taking a guess at it and no one has the crystal ball. So I like to look at it and go, okay, let's make sure we. Project revenues conservatively, but not too conservatively. So does it hamstring our ability to act on, on opportunities that come up? Make sure our priorities are in alignment and so that if, if we do end up with a recession and a budget shortfall, that we could agree on. What, uh, programs we should emphasize, what programs we should scale back. And then looking at, um, some of the other pieces along the way, is it all? You know, it usually comes out in the wash as far as, oh, we're going to take money within this fund and apply it to different expenses. And we're not going to do anything crazy, um, in the next year as far as dramatically changing. Water rates or we're not building eight hundred new places. So it's not going to change property taxes or tap fees and, you know, those numbers are going to move incrementally, but it's not going to be major swings. So that's, that's kind of the general framing in my approach to this tonight is to get. A little present you a couple of options in the, in terms of how we budget and then get your priorities within the budget. I'll say overall, what do we really want to emphasize with the talent? And so there's, uh, there are kind of three. Versions of budgets and you may do some versions of this within your businesses. There's the zero based budget where you start from scratch and you list out every single expense that you're going to have or every single revenue stream. And you build that up and you build your models and you say, this is where we think we're going to be. I assume a lot of that's been done in the past and building that up across all the funds seems a little. More labor intensive than it needs to be. The other version is more of a target based budget where you say, hey, this is what we've been doing in the past. These are kind of, if, if it's a, um, like the wastewater treatment plant is an enterprise fund. It looks at what it can bring in for revenue and that's an easy maintain its expenses under that. And it's capital projects within its, uh, that target budget has been established. And the one I prefer is the priority based budgeting, which, you know, is the idea that. If we think the biggest initiative this year was affordable housing. You know, money was set aside that was able to help secure, uh, Victoria Village. Went out and get, got grants to then bring that, bring that online. You know, that's a priority. You know, everything was around the, okay, how do we make Victoria Village happen? Cause it was a good opportunity that came, came available. If there are other priorities that, and I've heard some of them come up at the meetings. That we want to say, hey, this is, these are initiatives that we really want to look at and we want to prioritize. And that goes across things like the water funds, the wastewater fund, the general fund, the restricted funds. Because if we're going to build something, it may impact the trails or a lift stop or, uh, the piping and such. So these are, when we look at the budget, we say, these are the initiatives that we really want to make sure we take care of this year in the, in twenty twenty-three. And then we build the budget sub items around that. Does that make sense? Um, so now. I will turn it over to you, um, in the sense, uh, with basically going back to, um. A couple of questions that were in the evals that were sent around. Going back to that one of what are a couple of, um. Challenges you see facing the town in the next two years? So that we can look at those as initial potential priorities that we might want to emphasize. Yep.
Question about you said it has to be submitted to the state.
Turn your mic on. Sorry. Is it on? Thank you.
Just. So. I haven't, I have not done this with the municipality, um, in terms of, um. What the state looks for. But I think the state uses this for helping evaluate how they allocate grants and such, um, and state resources. Within schools, each school would create a budget, it would roll up to the district, the district then rolls up to the state. And they do audits within that, uh, mostly around, um. Are you meeting certain progressive objectives and all the students and such and, and making sure populations are taken care of? So the state may do that on the municipal level, but I kind of doubt it.
For me, in my experience, uh, it's more of a formality.
Yeah, okay.
The, uh, that preliminary budget, uh, whether you call it a draft budget or preliminary budget. It's a state requirement. We submit that to the Department of Local Affairs. I think it's just to check the box.
You know.
Have you ever had anything come back from the state saying?
Never, yeah, never. And there's, you know, the thing about the preliminary budget because it is. Somewhat arbitrary and it's early in the budget. Process, uh, it's really hard to find tune those things revenues. We won't get revenue projections till October, November anyway. So. I don't know exactly what the state is looking for, but if you don't turn in that preliminary budget, they'll be all over you.
They want something turned in.
They want something turned in.
And since we've got about three and a half million dollars from D O A this year, that's. That's probably the things that they're looking for is just make, and, and I'm sure D O A does some analysis to figure out. How they want to allocate across either municipalities, regions or, um, you know, sized towns, whatever demographics they want to look at.
I know some municipalities, they staff prepares the preliminary budget. There's not, it's not a final budget at the end of the day. I mean, we're, we're, we're starting to have two months. Excuse me, after that to, uh, to take that working document, that preliminary bu- budget and flush that completely out. So. When is, when is the final budget due? December thirty-first.
Yep. And then truly you can amend budget, budgets every month if you really wanted to. That's a painful process. I don't recommend it, but, um, uh, you know. A budget is a living, working document and I tend to look at it as it's really a discussion of priorities.
So. Rob mentioned the priority based budgeting and I've used a modified priority based budgeting. Throughout my time in Colorado. Again, you identify those priorities. Remember last year we had that, that meeting in the summer where we asked. What your priorities were and identified affordable housing as the number one priority. Under a true priority based budgeting, it's usually attached to your town strategic, uh, plan, their values, their, their strategic priorities and so forth. And in a larger municipality, it's very important to have a priority based budget because you get a lot of competition. Between different departments, police, fire, public works and so forth. A priority based budget, uh, aligns those, those priorities based on the values of the town. And those strategic values and those strategic priorities. When I was in Illinois, uh, we didn't have a striped about priority based budget. But we had a police force and a, and a fire department, the two strongest. Unions in, um, in Colorado and I'm sorry, in Illinois. And budget prep became very contentious, you know, I mean, you get the, well, if they don't get this money, someone's going to die argument. It's hard to get around that sometimes. So priority based budgeting says, okay. We have these four or five different values and these four or five different priorities. This aligns on three of those priorities. And that may become a higher priority than maybe a, another project that may only have a lot on two of those priorities. So that's a true priority based budgeting. Uh, we're not to that point yet, but, uh, we can certainly do a modified it, which is what we did last year.
So I, I got a check this week from the state. We found, I guess, a taper. So when the state runs a surplus, they have to give that money back to the taxpayers. Do they have the latitude to, to give it to municipalities or, or in, in form of grants and stuff?
Nope.
And what about us? We have a surplus.
Our, the taper laws, um, there was, you can do something called debruising. And debruising basically says that if, if your projections for, let's say, property tax revenues or any kind of tax revenues. Uh, actually come out higher. Then what you projected and exceeds that five percent increase, the taper limits it to. Debruising, uh, means you don't have to actually. Write refund checks to every taxpayer in town. It allows the, uh, the municipality to hold those. So we are protected. From increases in property taxes that may be subject to typical tailor because of the debruising laws.
We're protected from increasing increases. What about decreases?
Yeah, we just have to eat that one.
I mean, we, we take the surplus and just keep it in our general funds until. We decided what to do with it.
Yeah, typical goes, just goes into our reserves because we don't get that. That number really until toward the end of the year.
Yeah, taper, taper is one that we always want to watch out for, but it, it should not have a huge impact for us because most of our. Revenue is really coming from sales tax and that would be really hard to reimburse. As a percentage. But going back to the, that question where it's had some time to marinate. Just looking at what are some of the, the challenges that you see over the next two years? That we want to be thinking about as we start crafting a budget.
As Cornell mentioned earlier over dinner, um, the, uh, we do expect to see. Less travel with the inflation and, um, a downturn in the economy. So I think we need to be more conservative than we've been in the past few years.
Are you, are you, just for clarity? The conservative is more on the revenue side because we, we could see a drop in, for example, sales tax revenues.
Right.
Okay. So how that might look then would be maybe more commitment toward setting aside money in your strategic reserves. Which we do on a, on a regular basis. We typically, or at least we did last year, the, the strategic reserves are usually paid up with your surplus. But if you've set targets for those reserves and we do have targets and we have state mandated targets. That we have to maintain like the taper reserve and so forth. So. Now, I think a way to, to maybe address that is, is in our estimates and also maybe set some target goals for the reserves.
Yep. So, and right now when sales tax specifically. If there's an overage in sales tax that we collect, um, it's going to go, um, and we're sitting on. Cash, it goes into those rainy day funds, the strategic funds. Um, and it can backfill, uh, where we were underfunding like water, wastewater, some of those specific funds in the past, capital assets. It, when we go conservative on, uh, sales tax projections, it does also, um, reduces that one percent restricted funds. Which is, uh, transportation, trails and capital projects. Uh, it's mostly been used on the lift. And, uh, and, uh, the trails, um, and the lift prices we know are going up because we've had a buffer with a grant funding. So that would, um, as, as we, if we go too conservative on reserves or not reserves on the restricted funds. It means, uh, most likely a reduction in, um, funds for trails and maintenance and such. So those are, those are where the trade offs come in. Just because those are targeted restrictions. But I do think that. If we see a change in spending habits, um, then, you know, sales tax is our biggest revenue stream within our budget. So.
So Bron, are you saying you think, you said travel? Are you talking about like tourism dropping off because of? Maybe a recession.
Right.
I mean, what? I was going to pull up that your report, but it doesn't look, it looks like sales tax is consistently ahead of the previous year, year after year.
We've been consistently headed over the last three years. If, you know, kind of what we said before is if, if. At some point inflation makes people say, ooh, I don't want to spend money on a big trip. And so then that, if you have a. You know. If you're spending eight percent more at the grocery store, you know, the sales tax goes up. But if you, if no one visit that visits the grocery store, um, during spring break week or we get half the people. Then that would have a big impact on us, uh, in the negative way.
And tied to that, the restricted revenue fund, again, like Rob says, that does pay for our transportation obligation, uh, for the lift service. We knew last fall that, uh, that they are renegotiating their contract, uh, for lift service. They're going to see substantial pay increases for recruitment purposes there. The initial projection was that, uh, services could cost an additional fifty-three percent across the board. Now this year we're showing, uh, and this, this could be an important factor, maybe it addresses what you were talking about, Brian. This year, the town of Winter Park received grant funding that's offsetting those, those increased costs. So our cost would typically be around six, seven hundred thousand dollars per year. It's going to be substantially less than that, uh, for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. And you can commit some of those funds either toward, uh, a, a reserve in the restricted revenue plan because that's the only thing you can put it into. And we've talked about a couple of ideas about either, either doing that or setting some aside for rainy day or maybe taking a portion of that. Since typically those funds, uh, consume all of the, uh, the bus transit cost. And our parks improvements and there's been a little leftover for some of those capital projects. Which capital projects, especially in the, uh, out of the general fund, tend to be a little, uh, stretched then. It has been for several years.
Did you look at all for the two thousand and eight, or I guess it was two thousand and nine in Grand County? How much our revenue dropped?
I did not go back that far because that's a little harder for me to get to that data. Anything, anything before two thousand and fifteen is in a different data set. It would also be, it, it would be a good indicator, but it's, um. Our revenue bump has been because of collecting from previously uncollected sources. This was kind of the Wayfair, um, uh, court case that allowed us to, when Amazon ships here, they collect sales tax now for the town. And so that's, uh, that was all revenue that was, uh, lost beforehand. Um, and that was before two thousand seventeen. So all our numbers there were very depressed, um, and probably I'll say a third of what we are collecting now.
I, I just meant from, from two thousand seven to two thousand and nine.
Yep.
We do know that, um, in two thousand and twenty, when the COVID hit. You know, the town had a, a fully. Fledged out budget. But a decision was made to delay capital projects and delay some of those expenditures, I think. I don't have, I don't know which ones were delayed, but, uh, by deferring some of those projects. It was, I think that was performed as a cushion against, uh, possible loss of revenues due to COVID.
And initially when COVID hit, there was a major loss. Then everybody started ordering on Amazon and then, uh, the summer rolled around and then, uh, it exploded. As far as everybody wanted to get out of their cabin fever, um, and trying to go somewhere. So it, it had, uh, so we ended up flush on the cash side, but we had deferred a bunch of projects. So the profitability was high, but it meant that we, we basically kicked some of those projects down, you know, deferred to another year. And so, um, making sure that those strategic funds are getting replenished enough to take care of the backlog of projects.
Another big thing from a couple of years, I didn't have much input into last year's budget, but two years ago, when we, when we were looking through it. It didn't seem like the reserves were quite. As high as they should be.
Two years ago, they were not.
Yeah.
Last year, uh. So last year, sales tax came in about one point two million above projections and was used to. Do significant contributions to reserves. So it probably wasn't, wasn't totally enough to really catch up from a few years of not doing it. But I think that is, uh, we're, we're not in a. We're not in a desperate space with reserves, but I would like to see a, a regular contribution plan for reserves. Because that is, um, that just shows that you're being prudent with your annual budgets and our operating budget.
So what is a target for reserves? I mean, what do you want to keep it at a minimum?
Kind of, it depends on the fund.
Fund, yeah.
I mean, so it, it like, that's my favorite answer to all budget things is it depends, but, uh, it. Like the wastewater fund and the water funds really have different capital needs. So your reserves are really something that would get you through. You know, the first version is. A well goes down and we need to drill another well. So that's, you know, that's an emergency type approach. And the others are, we want to make sure that we fund at least a couple of capital projects out of, um. Either during the year or through reserves so that we can keep things moving forward. And not end up with too, too much failure in the system at the same time.
So can you move, move those reserves around to different buckets?
So you can, if it's in a fund, it stays in that bucket. And, uh. General fund dollars can go into the other funds, but the funds are meant to stay independent. Um, and so once you put money there, it stays there. You can, as a board, say, here's what we're going to do when we're going to reallocate something, but it's, um, the auditors don't like that at all.
So what you're showing in your report is a general fund reserve of, what, eighteen plus million dollars? So that's money that could be. Used to shore up. Different areas that are short.
Yes, yes. So that, um, and I'll, I can speak to that in the treasurer's report, but it's, that is reserves, general fund. That's everything. Um, if we were to look at taking all the buckets and putting it into one. So that's, it's not, uh, that's not pure general fund.
Okay, so there's several classifications of reserves as well. If you read the audit, auditor's report, you know, they have restricted reserves, they have committed reserves. The one category which we'd like to see with extra money and it's called unrestricted reserves. Those, those are your, your, your resources that you can draw from. You set reserve, uh, targets, for example, so you want to have a, uh, four to six month operating. Budget in reserves in your general fund. By making that policy, you actually commit those funds to that reserve. So they're no longer unrestricted funds. And it would require, uh, a, an appropriation by the board to take those funds for any other purpose.
Can you break this eighteen and a half million down into the different buckets that it's in or?
He has that.
Sort of.
Sort of.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a moving target and that's one that I can be like, yes, this is here. This is what we have in our reserves for your different funds and such. Most of it right now is an unrestricted general fund where we can move things where we need to. Depending on what's going on with projects.
Uh, I'm going to ask a question, you know, again, we. Affordable housing was a, a priority last year. Is that still something that you, that the board feels we need to keep as a priority?
I believe so. And the housing needs assessment. There was one point they made about how five years from now, the land won't be available. So if land does become available, we should be, try to be in a position to acquire it.
Right.
And, um, so.
Were the eight hundred thousand dollars that we appropriated last year. Allowed us to meet our match for the purchase of Victoria Village. Which came in at. Six point. Six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So we had. six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So we had, we had adequate funds in that, in that bucket there.
Housing serious.
On the housing side, when you said lands and trying to find like opportunities for land are, are great. Are there other acquisitions that would support affordable housing that we should also look at? That rather than starting from scratch, only because land takes at least three years to develop or, or get started where you can actually solve some of the problems.
And with the purchase of Victoria Village, we will have cost involved with, with, with developing this, this property. Even working with the developer, there'll be some obligation in our part for perhaps infrastructure, maybe to fill some kind of the gaps that they see within their performance. How to make, how to meet that AMI target that was required to meet the state.
I figure we probably won't know all the needs for it, but we should make that item significant in terms of our funding, just like we did last year. Or as, as good as we can, and if we had to, we can move the funds, something else happens.
Is there any, anything we can do to provide incentives for homeowners to rent out their extra apartment or something? I mean, I think Winter Park is doing something along those lines, right?
It's called a master lease program that they're doing there where they, they work with partnership with, with an employer or even maybe just the town, where they will bridge that gap between, you know, what they make in short term versus a long term obligation. And that way it makes an affordable option for people who, who are looking for an apartment or a condominium.
I mean, that, that seems like a say easy, but a, a good short term fix before, until we get some of the stuff built out. Man, I don't know how far off these apartments are. Well, Victoria Village is a long ways off, right? So what can we do in the short term? Either provide incentives, are you talking about they cover the gap in like cash payments or do they give them a break on their taxes or?
They cover the gap.
Okay.
You're kind of restricted in being able to give breaks on taxes as a statutory term.
Don't have answers to this now, but I'm curious of how successful it was in Winter Park last year.
This needs assessment, it sounded like what, you had forty? Forty beds? Anyway, it, it addressed it in here. And it sounded like it was fairly successful. The number of beds that they were able to secure for employees.
So the Winter Park is looking at budgeting for the short term fix again for next year.
Okay.
Can we, can we learn a little bit more about that program?
We did, we, we, we actually, you know, we can always revisit it. We did bring it to the board for consideration. I have no idea of time, maybe six months ago, eight months ago. We did bring it to the board just to see if it's something the board was interested in. And at that time, the board basically decided that our focus is on more permanent solutions versus, versus a short term fix based on our revenues available. But we can always revisit that program.
And I mean, I'm thinking about the, the short term rental funds that hopefully will, will, will have some, some money there. Could we not use it for a program like that?
You can use it for, you know, if it's, if it's to for affordable housing options, there's a whole range of things that those funds could be used for, but that's going to require a policy decision by the board. You know, once we get, if the board tonight approves the, the short term rental fee resolution, I think it's worthwhile maybe to even have another dedicated work session just for affordable housing, because there's a lot of options out there that, that that we can explore. There's also several opportunities out there that, quite frankly, I think we need to be exploring as well.
So Louis, and are you familiar with the tunnel winter parks, real estate transfer tax that they collect? Okay. That's how they fund a lot of that.
No, one and a half percent or whatever it is.
Three dollars per square foot or three dollars or something. You can tell me.
I think it's just one percent.
One percent of the sales, sales price.
So I also, streets, parking have been popular topics. I'm, I'm glad we only picked like the cheap ones for.
I'd like to see some money go into, if nothing else, our planning and this may well be coming down the pike anyway for parking, traffic flows through town, what we're going to do with pedestrian access. If nothing else for planning for this year, so that we can forget what our costs will be in the future. And be getting other partners to participate in some of the costs.
I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing to, I mean, obviously we're going out for bids for, for Victoria Village, but to maybe budget for a chunk of that to be a parking garage that we just pay for and own, maybe make money on later, something like that.
I'll also say that I've spent the better part of the past two days, you know, trying to finalize the requests for proposals for our comprehensive plan update. Several examples that I was drawing from included things like a transportation plan, pedestrian access plans and so forth. And you can even have them to, to look at parking as well within this. So your consultant would come in and, and make that evaluation, make recommendations.
Great. Subtly tied into the comprehensive plan. Great.
And I know everybody was really happy with the road conditions going over buyer, birthed. Are we seeing? I think there's all, you know, we have traffic flow on forty that's having really high density on the weekends and such, and spilling into the shoulders of the weekends, the summer season. Are we seeing other roads that are high alert spots that you, that you're hearing about?
Yep, Corona Pass. Have you been up there lately?
Oh, my God.
Keeps the riffraff out.
We'll, we'll have a, a little bit of snow to help us with that one later.
It's, it's that bad.
Yeah.
But that's the Forest Service.
Yeah, it, it gets a significant amount of traffic now.
One of four wheeler grand adventures and they're perfect.
Well, that's part, that's partly the reason why it's all torn up.
Oh, it's been bad for years.
This year's, it was rain, but also all the traffic and those, those ATVs running up and down, and I don't know how many.
Let's solve our own problem before we solve them.
And that, and that leads to another one. We've had a lot of, a lot more significant rain so far this year, the summer, which is awesome. But we're also seeing water running off and, and cheating in different places that, you know, we weren't always anticipating. But as, you know, if we, if we end up in a recession with a monsoon season that's regular for what Colorado used to be, rather than droughts, do we need to start thinking about water mitigation plans for surface water?
I know my neighborhood gets a little sketchy. Below street level, but the drain pan is clear, so so long as it's clear, okay.
Along that topic, one of my priorities that I've been working with and and looking into, and this helps us with our long range planning for the town, for our capital expenditures and so forth. Our roads, the money that we have available for road construction and road maintenance is pretty limited. And we tend to take roads one year at a time, you know, this, this road's pretty bad, so let's just plan on budgeting something for this road. I believe in master plans. We have the, the wastewater collection system master plan, which helps us prioritize, you know, where inflow and infiltration, where undersized and, and damaged pipes need to be replaced. I've reached out to a couple of consultants to, to see if we can get an inventory of our roads and a condition report, so we can set a five to 10 year plan for road maintenance and road replacement. And along with that, we're going to expand that to include the pans, sidewalks and curbs. They go along that because we've got a lot of curbs that need a lot of work and concrete work is sometimes hard to schedule. But if we've got a comprehensive plan, makes it easier to budget and, and you can even delay a plan if, if, if funds are tight. But you know, if you've got that master plan in place, it, it helps you identify that, well, I know that Eastern Road needs to be replaced, you know, they, they get flooded all the time.
Infiltration of our water system, sewer system, that is, you've got too much of that.
Right.
I'm sure Joe will give some more insight on that in a minute.
Are there any other priorities though, from the board's perspective? You know, we, we've talked about some of the challenges to be, we're looking out for as far as maybe a possible inflation or if it leads to some kind of recession, even though the, the Fed has taken pretty aggressive actions there. We've talked about the affordable and workforce housing, continuing that to be a priority as well. We had a lot of discussions about Corona Pass, but I'm not sure that's going to be on our.
No.
Well, I mean, how many, how many priorities can we have? And, you know, realistically.
So what are the backlog projects? Some of those might need to be our priorities. What are they?
I mean, I'm so from three to five.
If you have three to five that are overarching priorities, they, they will work themselves out in the budget as far as helping prioritize different individual projects. But the projects that we're deferring right now is Byers Avenue.
Lion's Pond.
The Lion's Pond, like we're doing bits and pieces, but they won't be completed within this year. As far as completion of that, the Mary's Ponds Trail Loop, is that the one that you're talking about? Mary Anne's Loop. We're good. We got an extension, we got an extension and everything like that. So we're twenty twenty-four.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so we have some time. We should be definitely done by then. It was, but we're running into is the, hey, we, we can get this bathroom delivered. And then where you put it, and making sure the foundations.
We're talking about that.
I have talked to them about that. They're, they're perfectly fine with that. And we even talked about possibly exchanging some quarterly water fees during that.
So those are moving, but then there's the, the rest of the build out that you're like, oh, is, when does this project get the checkbox of this is actually done?
So we had one point three million dollars in, in this water combo project budget for this year. We received no bids. We put a priority on the Lion's Pond because of the deadline of the grant, which we got an extension for, and also because of the, the deadline for when that bathroom would be delivered. And we're working with Conroy excavating right now. He's putting together a proposal to build a foundation for the bathroom, so we can set that in place before it arrives.
Perfect.
Byers Avenue, we are, have got new engineering to address the, the freezing line out to the curb stops. And we'll be going out for a bid this November to complete that project next year.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah.
And then there's the.
And the other projects were, there was some waterline looping up on the hill and also some valve replacements.
So nothing getting done this summer.
Some things, bits and pieces, but not, not the whole project, no.
So nothing sitting down.
When, when is that? Is it cornerstone that's putting in that line across forty or under forty?
Right.
When is that going to be finished?
It's almost finished now.
Okay.
The, the bore is complete, the pipe's in place. The alignment of the board didn't come out exactly. And they hardly ever do. Of course, they've been very good about submitting updates and change orders, and those change orders have been reviewed by Merrick and have been approved. But talking with Clark yesterday, I think he's just going to cap it on both ends. And then backfill it and save the actual connection until it's needed.
So. Yeah. Keep kicking that ball down the road.
Long as I've been.
Too long.
Yeah.
Where is that?
We don't know.
Yeah.
We don't know where it's going to put it.
It's here, it's here now, right? But we need to, a bigger one.
Yeah. Ba- basically they've hit the cap and if we add more roads and, and things to service and plow, having the equipment to do it, we're, we're kind of hitting those thresholds.
So what, which roads are owned and maintained by the state and which are our responsibility?
Forty's by the state, everything else is our responsibility.
Okay, yeah. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ours or could be county or, or, or development that we haven't accepted yet.
So ponds, so the pond that's behind the rendezvous event center. It's to the south of Mary's Pond, because Mary's Pond is the one that rendezvous, right? Is that small? Is that our retention pond? Okay, good. It really needs cleaned out bad. Which was the one that we have water storage in? Do you remember, Eileen? One of those ponds.
It's, it's the combo ponds, the, the north one, the, the longer skinnier one.
Actually, those are owned by Grand County number one.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we, we have augmentation rights.
Yeah.
Our storage rights.
Yeah.
Seventeen acre feet, I believe.
And I think that there was talk at one point about the pond next to it, the ones in the south, being redug and having an opportunity there. And so
Nothing happened.
That, nothing's happened with that. I mean, a lot of these projects have all been like, hey, we've got the plan and we couldn't get a contractor and, you know, but, you know, being able to buy water or augment storage rates there, you know, could, you know, the ability to find other ways to maintain access to water.
And we are still discussions. There's a five acre dedication that's owed to us by Cornerstone Development. And right now he has a grading permit to do a little digging right just off of the old victory road, and that's the location where we would want the pond. So that's, that's another option as far as creating reservoirs and augmentation ponds for us. I will point out that I've had conversations with both Grand County number one and Winter Park Ranch. All three boards, our board and their two boards are all in favor of these emergency interconnections. So we will be looking to try to schedule some kind of engineering next year with maybe a construction in the, in the following year. I, I don't know if I would classify that as a capital expenditure, but engineering can sometimes cost fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
But those expenses would be two hundred twenty, twenty-four anyway, right?
And they'd be split three ways.
Yeah. Yeah. So one of the things that we've talked about is bringing in or, or working on infrastructure with extra crowding and such around the town and all of our visitors. Is the board still committed to special events and, because that was one of the town board light items, art and public spaces, a lot of these things that draw people in. Is, you know, do we maintain that as a high commitment from a marketing standpoint or creating events and welcoming people?
Yeah, I think we should keep a commitment to it.
I don't think we need to increase it, but.
Okay.
I would also point out that today I was reviewing the, the Fraser River Trail Open Space Master Plan. And this is one that shows what an ultimate conceptual plan would be for the Lions Park area. The proposed amphitheater, the bathroom project is part of that as well. And the reason I got onto that was, was I realized that this playground next to us is a little old and a little dated. And, and we're kind of limited in, in, in playgrounds, the town owns, we own this one. I think there's one up there close to rendezvous. But we have this master plan which lays out maybe what an ultimate build out looks like there. I think that should be revisited and start making, making some plans for maybe the next step and, and what goes in there as well.
Lawsuits?
Lawsuits?
Lawsuits, lawsuits, you know? Increase that line.
Legal.
Joking, but not joking.
Not really. Keep our legal fund significant.
Early childhood care is crisis. I'm not sure how it fits in our budget.
Well, what?
Wow. Could be a money maker if we sell that plot of land.
What plot of land are you talking about?
The telesquirts here.
I hope they're able to expand their daycare.
We'll be selling it for very much. Probably not, they have a lot of money.
Yeah.
So we're not going to make money on selling the land.
Yeah, right.
All all daycare. Not just early.
Well, I know we're talking about priorities and that and that gives us about five or six priorities that we can start working with, and we'd like to bring this back to the board once we kind of flush that out a little bit. Um, another question that I had personally, uh, you know, when Jeff Durbin was here, they had a finance committee or budget committee. We talked about it briefly last year. I think Brian, you wanted to be part of that. It just never materialized. And I wanted to ask the question if the board would like to see that as we go through this budget process.
I would.
I know it's good when you did it. Used to do it every year.
I'd like to see it, but I can't do it.
I I think it's a great for the new people that are on the board. It would be this one, it would be key for you guys to to volunteer and be on that committee. To know the finances of the town is tremendous. And I did, I did it every year when I, when we.
We were all expected to be on it.
Yeah.
That was good. See a lot of stuff that you don't see when you get to the board.
So to keep this free from the Open Meetings Act, I would make a recommendation that the two trustees, then Budget Committee, Lewis, maybe Brian, for this next budget cycle, does that sound agreeable?
Me, I don't want to say that.
And they're done now?
Anybody else? I have to say no to that right now.
So I mean, I have two.
Are you? Yeah, I can I can do it. I mean, I've I've done budgets and stuff and have finance background, but.
We'll we'll reach out to you. We'll we'll talk about maybe what that looks like. I'd love to get some feedback from people who've been on the budget before and what those elements in that committee look like. So to make sure that we're covering, you know, basically what the trustees or expectations of the budget committee.
I mean, I guess I see, you know, there's major priorities and then there's these minor priorities or lower cost parties that you want to accomplish, but I mean, we can't boil the ocean, right? We only have finite resources and we need to focus on those or otherwise we won't get anything done.
Well, I I would just say for a public works facility, I've had conversations uh, with an individual who has some land uh, who's interested in maybe working with the town for a location for possible public works facility. If this public works facility, and I've brought this up before, is relocated, we have the opportunity to put in workforce housing right here next to the town hall. So a lot of elements could come into play with just the relocation of the public, so that we bring up room in the town hall, keep this building. But you can you can tackle a couple of, a couple of things at the same time. So uh, but a public works facility is not something we would budget for a construction. A budget work facility would be something we might budget for if a deal comes through to set aside money for maybe architectural plans or designs and so forth like that, which would be significantly less than the than the cost of a construction of a building.
Does it have to be within the town city limits or can be anywhere?
It can be.
Because they put that the the new lift uh, facility at not really fifty, right?
Yes.
I've I've driven by it a couple of times. It looks like a big um, big piece of land.
I think they're leasing.
The biggest, the biggest challenge with being outside of the town limits is infrastructure, water, sewer service and so forth. And then uh, the the property we're looking at could be easily annexed into the town.
What do they want?
Well, they're already making a ten acre donation. It will be annexed into the town.
Okay.
So.
They want to annex into the town?
Okay.
Cool.
Okay. Can we take a five minute break before?
Five minute break.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Ralph.
Hey, I'd like to call to order the town of Fraser's regular board meeting on Wednesday, August seventeenth at seven PM. Can I please have a roll call?
Katie Fisher.
Louis Gregory.
Elaine Waldo.
Brian Sirkvenic.
Or Quinn.
Katie Souls.
Philip Vanderneil. Um, I would like to propose that we make a couple of changes to the agenda. One is that um, because I'm going to recuse myself later tonight uh, for the short term rental fees that um, that that actually get moved for the end.
Okay.
Um, because then I'm just going to, I'm not going to come back for to adjourn, so and I'm not going to sit out in the park for an hour and a half. And then moving open forum up to priorities, discussion and possible action.
And Phil, if I could, I'd like to move seven C. Retention and cost of living adjustment plan to executive session. At a later date. So we can have an open discussion about that.
Do you want to table it to another meeting?
Yep.
Instead of.
Yep, I have an executive session.
Is that a more of a personnel discussion for the town and employees?
Yep.
So maybe that's more appropriate.
Okay. So Leslie, did you catch all of that? Because you're, okay, so we're going to move short term to the very end, open forum before discussion and possible, and we're going to table remove that um, seven C, seven C retention and cost of living for a future next. Okay, I have a motion or a motion to approve that with those additions or those changes.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
I, I.
All opposed? Great, now that everything's, okay, consent agenda. I need a motion to approve that, which just includes the minutes from August third.
So move.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? And next is um, David Buckley, candidate for how Colorado House District thirteen. And then just for the people in our audience, if you can please sign in if you haven't done so. Um, little sign in sheet over here to so we know what's going on. And then if you want to come up to the podium. Yeah.
Thank you for having me tonight. Uh, just want to take an opportunity to introduce myself. Is everybody aware of the new district? The whole state got redistricted last year. So just for refresher, District thirteen includes six counties. Starting from the north, it's Jackson, Grand Summit, Lake Park and Chatham. So it's a big territory. And uh, I live over in Kremlin in Grand County. And I work at Roden Bridge here in Grand County. So I can appreciate some of the discussion you guys had during your budget. I'm the guy that drives the mag distributor. So hopefully you like mag. If you don't, don't hold that against me for the election, but uh, so yeah, um, it's been great. Uh, one of the things that we're experiencing in Roden Bridge is a staffing shortage, so um, we feel the pain of what's happening in here in Grand County. And if you all remember back in the fall of last year, early part of this year, I was running for county commissioner because Chris Manguza was stepping down in District Three. And then I I got involved in this race at the end of February. And the reason why I got involved in this race is I had a really good discussion with Commissioner Chino and Commissioner Manguza at the time. And uh, with the redistricting, that shuffled everything around and uh, they presented this opportunity to me, which at first I wasn't receptive to because I was really focused on supporting Grand County. And trying to, especially after working in Roden Bridge and traveling the county and talking to folks, I also own a business over in Kremlin. I own Strand Salon, the building right there in the square, big green building. And uh, so I wasn't really receptive to it at first, but then after thinking about it and having an opportunity to represent Grand County at the Capitol here uh, was really appealing to me. So obviously the district includes six counties, but my home county is Grand County. So I want to do everything I can to have an impact at a state level to supporting our county as we talk about affordable housing, roads, fire mitigation, all of that business um, economy. I uh, have a background in healthcare and transportation, primarily medical transportation. I had a very fortunate career in uh, in healthcare, and then I got into government contracting with Medicaid and Medicare. And I was able to travel the United States to get and work with legislators, uh, lobbyists, bureaucrats and trying to work with how we can deliver medical transportation to Medicaid and Medicare recipients throughout the country. The only state I haven't been to yet is North Dakota. So hopefully that's uh, that's on the bucket list and I'll get there and I'll have all fifty states. Uh, with that exposure, I learned a lot, uh, saw how different states manage and uh, saw some good things and I saw some bad things. So um, again, having the opportunity to get involved here to support Grand County, I'm very excited about. I retired from that corporate world in uh, two thousand sixteen and joined up with a high school buddy to become a franchise business owner. He already had it. And so I just invested into it. And uh, for those who are interested, it's Spore Clips. It's a franchise that started out of Texas. And it competes with Great Clips and all of those franchise hair salons. Well, we were impacted obviously by the mandates and lockdowns and me being the last one in as the investor, I'm the first one out, but I'm still a a silent partner in the business. But I took the opportunity to refocus my career. And I got my truck driver's license and now working here at Grand County for about a year and a half, going on two years. And uh, the experience has been phenomenal. Uh, for me, it worked out very positive. And it just opened my eyes to an opportunity to get involved at government level. Like I said, I've been very fortunate to have the career that I've had. Have a lot of experience and I feel that I can represent our county at the Capitol. Maybe not in every element, but in a large portion of it. And so one of the things that's important to me and why I wanted to get involved is collaboration. And why I'm here tonight is not only to introduce myself to you all, but let you know that I want to be able to collaborate with you all. That's why I'm here, listening to what topics. But let you know that I want to be able to collaborate with you all. That's why I'm here listening to what topics you have, what's prioritized for you. What you're focusing on in the future. Uh, and that's what I want to be involved in. I don't know exactly what that means at this point. To be fair. This is new for me. I'm getting into this with limited experience and I have a very tough competitor to go against and. So but I'm very hopeful that we'll have some success in the election and once elected. I want to be able to keep this dialogue open. With you all and figuring out how we can collaborate. To make the greater good to serve the residents and citizens of our county. And so that's my purpose is to offer that up. And I don't want to take a lot of your time. I know you have a lot of business to go over. But here on this card is my website. If you have any questions for me, I'll certainly answer any now if you haven't. But if you have something you want to ask me privately, you can reach out to me. All my contact information is on that website. And if there are no further questions from anyone, I appreciate the time and the introduction.
Would you repeat the six counties?
Yes, starting from the north, it's Jackson, Grand Summit. Lake, Park and Chaffey. Most of Chaffey, there's a little southeast fragment carved out.
So not route.
Not route, correct. That's House District twenty-six.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Next is the Grand County Tourism Board, and we have three representatives, Lindsay Murrow, Robert Clay and Paul Lewis.
And we have a presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, well, thanks for making time for us tonight. I've been on the Grand County Tourism Board now, I think, for about six years. Was given the honor, the opportunity or the mandate to serve one year as president. And but. Before COVID really got started, we, you know, we are a. The Grand County Tourism Board is funded by Grand County Tourism Tax. Yeah, which is one point eight percent. In all of the areas in Grand County with the exception of Winter Park, which is a home rule. Town, so they don't contribute to the directly to the funds that are collected, the taxes that are collected. The mandate had been initially to promote Grand County and. Generally speaking, overnight stays guests to come to the county. And. We've had over the years up and down success with that. I think we've had some positive influences. I think about two years ago, probably just before, maybe two and a half years ago, just before. COVID really took hold up here. We started talking about. Are we still trying to bring more people to Grand County? And if we are, what? What can we do a little differently? And we're starting to see around the country and around the world, this concept of sustainable tourism. And we didn't know anything about it. We still, just for the record, are still learning a lot about it. But it was something that, you know, we've heard. Just starting to get. Rumblings of, you know, the county's growing, there's a lot going on. Maybe we should be taking a look at how that, how we promote tourism in Grand County. And the more we dug into it, the more we determined that we wanted to open our eyes a lot more to what. The impact of tourism is and what it means to the county. So I'm actually going to ask you to whoever's got the control to hit the page for me. There's a couple of things that we we need. To understand or help, and we don't need to understand, but we would like to understand. Tourism, and I think we heard it here a little bit of the discussion earlier, tourism makes up. A little over seventy percent of the sales tax revenue in Grand County. That's a pretty big number. It employs around. Six thousand people. That's also a big number for the county. People are here. We we want to appreciate what tourism does for the county. But also start to take a look at the future of how that, how do we manage this and how do we? Become smarter and how does it become more sustainable? We, you know, anybody who's tried to been out to Monarch Lake on a Saturday afternoon. Will know that, you know, by ten o'clock, you can't find a place to park. And there's a gazillion people on the trails. But we have a whole other rest of the county that people could go see. So there's all these different types of things. We decided that we didn't really have a clue as a tourism board. We were primarily business people here in the county. We're represent all three. Well, we're we're. Broken up into districts. We represent all three districts. There's four representatives from each district. Fraser Valley, three, what we call the three lakes. You know, what do we call the third one? Mainstone, where all the dude ranches are. And and all in Kremlin and Partial and Hot Sulphur Springs. We have had a really remarkable run as a group of very diverse interests. With four representatives from these three different districts, we've actually come together and been. Pretty much universally in agreement the last. Five or six years on our initiative and how we we operate. We wanted. To understand how we could help the county more going forward. So we embarked on this process of interviewing. Some consulting companies. We worked with some of the agencies that we already have relationships with. And we allocated some funding to conduct. Some research into what does it mean to be sustainably? What is sustainable tourism? What does it mean for the county? What does it mean for tourism? In the long, in the long run, there's a lot of detail in here. You all have these slides. We're going to leave you some lead behinds as well. If you could have the next one, please. We've hired a company called Caraggio as a consulting group. We have started a process that will help us generate a long term plan. We will not be the implementers of the plan. We're. We're trying to put together a group of stakeholders from across the county. And we're trying to come to this concept of smart, sustainable tourism. And there's a lot of elements to that. A lot of them we're still discovering. We have already initiated the process, but we are, we have just started. So we're, we're. You know, in half a step one of what is going to be a many, many step process. We are, if you can get the next one for me too, please. The, the. The concept is to be destination stewards. So here we're looking at four primary elements. That we're, we're looking at how tourism impacts. Obviously, the economy. With seventy some percent of the sales tax revenue in the county being generated by tourism, it's something we have to. Be cognizant of how we impact that when with with decisions we make about what happens around the county and what. You know, workforce housing and all these different things that come into it taxing. We want to create a balanced solution that works with the community. And and generates the income that we all want to continue forward with. We want to celebrate the culture of Grand County, right? We, you know, it's evolving quickly right now, but the culture of, you know, Grand County. Has been here, it's been popular and it's created the destination that people want to come to. So we need to respect that and make sure we understand how it works. The environment, I think, is a pretty much easy one for all of us. We have natural resources here that are spectacular. And people. Really like to come and see them and enjoy them and but we need to make sure we. We use those now in a way. That we can protect them for the longevity and not only for tourists, but as much for all of us who have chosen to live here and make this our homes. And also, you know, all the other elements of that, the wildlife, the natural resources, the water. So the plans that we're looking at are trying to take all these things into consideration. Along with the one down here on the bottom, which it hits you guys a little bit as a, as a. As a town and as a government, but infrastructure and, you know, we all feel this as well. Infrastructure plays a part in this. We can't really have too much more, too many more people here, whether they're tourists or homeowners. Without managing our infrastructure in a way that allows people to move around the county and enjoy the things that we have to offer. Next. So here we are. We're, we're definitely on phase one. We have started. You may have participated. We've started with surveys around the county. We actually had a phenomenal response. I think it was about seven hundred people replied. Including hundred and how many?
So our goal was actually just to get a hundred and fifty. You can get seven hundred, but there's a participation and then two hundred and seven actual industry related.
We struck a nerve.
Shocked, actually.
Yeah. So the stakeholder survey has been, is, we've done that. We're, I will talk, we're going to touch on that with a little bit with some of the responses. I don't think they'll be too surprising. Phase two is what we're starting to work on now. We're, we're trying to to gather the information and put it together into terms of a plan. We're still have town hall meetings that we're going through. Will be in and out our Caraggio and the Tourism Board will be interacting with different stakeholders throughout the county. Pretty regularly now, this meeting with you today, just to tell you what we're doing is just the start of what we. Expect in the communication plan with with all of our towns and chambers and the county. And eventually we'll, we'll get to something that we hope can be executed on. And, you know, implemented across the county that will make, that will take into consideration. All these divergent interests.
And just to run off of that, so phase.
So Lindsay, you can't, you got to come up to the microphone. Because we have people listening.
Okay, I apologize. So just to let you guys have timeframe. So on phase three, our goal is to try to have that by the middle of November. So really. We're trying to take this as a pretty fast action, but making sure that we're not forgetting any of the steps. But. Our goal was by the end of this year is to have this plan and be able to get that out to our stakeholders.
We're like, no, no, thanks. Next, please.
So this is what we heard from. The initial outreach. So there's a perception of over tourism. Locals are concerned that Grand County is losing its identity and sense of community. There's certainly a lot of people here. Tourism is is do is thriving. I think what we're going to find as we get into this some more is that there's a lot more people living here. A lot more people using their second homes. COVID definitely spurred people to get out. Out of the cities and up to the mountains. We have some initial indications from state surveys. But we'll do more research here locally to to try to. Confirm some of those things. Grand County's current tourism infrastructure may be able, unable to support going tourism. Now, these are things that came out of the. These are not our findings. These are the themes that we heard from the, the different groups that who responded to the surveys. You can read these as well as I can read them. I don't need to read them to you. They're. There, but these are the things that we are going to respond to. And these are the things that we're determined to be important to the people that took the time to respond to it. So the countywide survey, as I said, is done. These, this is where we really are starting to, the point that we really want to make. We want to work together with everybody in the county. There are some local localities that have started some of this themselves. There are some organizations that have started this themselves. We hope to provide. Some sort of structure that different entities can pick and choose to participate in. And and we're not, we still don't really understand what that all means yet, but. We think that to make this work. The destination of Grand County. You know, we, we definitely all need to work together to create something on this. So. We're going to, we've got the stakeholder outreach is is going on. Like I said, we have some town hall meetings that we're following up with. We are going to put together an advisory group. And a stakeholders group. And. Then we're also going to, they call it special counsel. It's third party experts on different. Different issues that subject matters. So they will all be engaged as we move forward on this. This is where I come back, you know, your involvement is definitely important and necessary. We hope that we can get representation from the town of Fraser, whether from the board or from staff. That would like to sit in and have be representative of the people of Fraser. There are homeowners who are, will be part of that as well, but we would, you know, we want to hear from all the different. Organizations and and Fraser is a very well established town and community. It would be. I think very beneficial to have you be part of the ownership of this plan eventually. And. Those are, that's where it is. We've committed. Two hundred thousand dollars for the first nine months of this project. So. It was, it's a real thing. We hope to come up with a real plan. And we hope to do it quickly enough to have it be part of the conversation. At towns, at chamber of commerces and at businesses and, you know, and then, you know. At Rocky Mountain Roastery, you know, have it be part of the, the community conversation. Any questions? Yes.
Not a question. Good. I don't think this was in our packet. I wonder if you could send that out or can someone send this out, this, this presentation?
So I emailed that a couple of days ago.
Oh, you did?
So you guys should have all.
Okay, I just wanted on the agenda, so I wasn't sure where.
Oh, sorry. Yes, definitely. And there's a one, there's a one shooter too, that if you could send that.
That'd be great. And while you, while we have you here, I was just curious. What are your thoughts around the short term rental issue that we're getting ready to discuss?
I don't mean to laugh, but we just, this is like countywide conversation.
Yeah, well, and I own, I'm one of the owners of Stay Winter Park Vacation Rentals.
I think I have to put my fingers in my ear.
Yeah, no, I know, right?
So I have, I can't.
This doesn't.
Different question.
Well, look.
This doesn't apply to you and you should not be.
So my question is around. In your surveys, did you get any feedback about this? Because we, we've heard some from constituents that. Say it's going to kill the short term rental market. Nobody's wanting to come up here and it brings all the revenue in and it's going to hurt the economy and blah, blah, blah. I don't really believe that, but I'm wondering what your.
Do I think that?
Your thoughts or what feedback you've gotten from some of your surveys?
So I don't know that we have specific, we, 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 there's a concept that there's too many tourists here. There's a perception of that. That's been, that built pretty dramatically over the last two years. But as I said, we also have anecdotal evidence that it's not that tourism is up, but so is homeownership use. And there's, you know, everybody pretty much knows that. There's no lack of building going on in Grand County. And those are not all short terminals, I promise you. My number of short terminals has stayed static the last three years. I have not. Sum up by choice, but we. There's not a dramatic increase in short term rental properties up here. Are they? Going, are they being used more often? Yes. Are there a lot more short, a lot more second homeowners using their properties? Yes. Are there a lot more people living here? You know this as well as I, I mean, yes, people are here. There's more people in town. We want to make sure there's a, that that balance is correct. We want, you know. there's a perception that there's too many tourists. I don't know the answer if what that number, I don't know what a good number of tourists is. Do we want people coming up here and respecting what we have to offer here? We absolutely do.
Well, I think some of the stuff that came out of the survey about short term rentals is that we've seen a major shift in the last five years with Covid on hotels. So before it was people wanted the hotel. That's a problem with Grand County is that we don't have the infrastructure currently in place to offset the short term rental. So what we've kind of done with this process is we did a two day training with Coraggio and we went through the short term rental was saying, how do we shift this? But we need the infrastructure in place to shift that from short term rentals to other things to help with affordable housing. So we're having a conversation. We just don't have, here's the magic ball to.
I could talk to you later. I'll.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, I don't think the issue is around, my question is not around do we have too many short term rentals or or what? It's just around what is the right, what's the sweet spot for fees in terms of supporting, having, you know, supporting the town and what we want to do with affordable housing.
Right. I, I wrote a letter to the to the board as a as not as a tourism board, but as a home, as a business owner in in the area. We have properties in in Fraser that we manage. And I support the concept of a registration and a reasonable fee to to manage, you know, some of the issues. Do I think picking one industry to support short term or workforce housing versus the other industries? I'm not a big fan of that concept. You're speaking to Robert Blay now, not the Grand County Tourism Board. But, you know, I I, we need more workforce housing. I mean, I bought condominiums in Fraser for my staff because I couldn't find anything to rent. So yes, I, you know, do I think at some point, does it have an impact? The 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 biggest problem with with the fee based system is short term rentals are not universally the same. One owner rents it out for Christmas and New Years to supplement because he can make a big check for two weeks. And then doesn't really run out. He wants to use it the rest of the time. How do you charge that person the same amount as the person who runs it out for forty weeks a year? That you'll you'll lose those short, if you lose capacity, you lose sales tax. So that's the one danger that I throw out there.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions?
I have a question. I think it's awesome. I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm just curious, how do you? It's a one point eight percent fee that goes.
It's a lodging tax. Voters of Grand County voted for.
That's what I thought. Okay, so if the voters voted for it, I'm just curious to how that you would just would just change the target of the revenue stream without it being voted on again.
We we can't.
So how is it being moved from advertising to, which I totally support, but I just don't understand how you're moving it?
So our lodging tax.
Or marketing to?
Well, we we consider this to be just improved marketing. That we're research, I mean, this is research on what the tourism does, how it impacts the county. We, that's part of, that's all definitely part of, it's not dollars on ads in the Denver, you know, fifty two eighty or something like that. But it's helping us understand what market we have, what resources we have and what we need to continue to be sustainable tourism. Where it's not an anti, I mean, I want to be really clear, we're not anti-growth. We want managed growth. We want smart growth. We want, you know, we, the the county still needs to grow to survive.
And our and our bylaws state that how the funds are transferred to us. So the state.
I just want to be clear that what the voters voted on, although I support it one hundred percent. I just want to, I don't want to lose sight of what the voters.
No, no, I, we don't, we, this is a conversation that we have frequently. Well, no, because part of our funds go to a lot of events that are supported around and we have, you know.
So percentage of our budget is allocated per district for nonprofit grant orientation. So for example, how Robert said, we have the three districts, so our bylaws dictate how much money each district gets. So, you know, so all the chambers, for example, get block grants, which is amazing because we're one of the biggest contributors to that. And then like, you know, the mural festival, we helped with that one. Grand Lake, we're doing the troublesome. So we really want to make sure that that money that we are getting is going right back into the community. You know, if we've been asked, you know, unfortunately, we'll take this money and go to affordable housing. We don't get that much that's going to even touch the iceberg of what a big project can be. So rather, let's help these nonprofits, let's help our chambers, let's educate. And a lot of this is what we're doing right now is like what Robert said, we have to be sustainable. You know, all of a sudden, we said no more marketing to Grand County, like we have studies that we've looked at, Vancouver did this, and it's detrimental to see what it has done to the economy. It's not right away, but it's this downward spiral that we want to be very cautious of that. I think one of the biggest things that we're looking at is that I think we talked about is the cultural. We've got to make sure our, you know, the people that are living here, you know, our residents, we need to take care of them, the businesses, then the tourists. And if we look at that type of a foundation, it's going to just keep us all in a much happier place. It's interesting. People think it's busier this year and we have data. It's our actual visitation numbers are slight are down.
Tourists, vacations are down.
All right, but the length of stay is longer. So not as many people are coming, but they're staying a little bit longer. So you have to look at that balancement of what that was up, but that is also showing as well.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Great, thanks. And we appreciate the tourist money coming for the Mural Festival.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night. We are now, we are now at open forum and I don't see, and there's nobody in our audience now, and I don't see anybody, anybody online. There's no, okay.
Will we get a report on the Mural Fest?
I would hope so. Not today, though. Okay, now we are at I don't know, I didn't think of this before, but I saw Louis sign on and I'm like just sign on to Zoom, right here in my lap. So thanks, Louis.
Well, I mean, again, I didn't, maybe it was.
I was like, you said it wasn't on there.
Okay. Okay, we are now at discussion, possible action, treasures report, Rob.
No action required. This is one's short and sweet. We'll go to the next slide. I think this is a PDF format, so, okay, so it's not in the slide deck. Basically, looking at the statement of funds and the sales tax revenue, keeping just those two that we've been looking at.
Can we get the fans back on?
We'll get the next slide. That's okay. The infrastructure is really loud. So this is our statement, and this is general fund reserves and the green is the operating positions. The green had a big spike. That's because we took a a business check for half a million dollars for surety. And then that was to get the project started and they transferred that to a bond. So when in September, when that shrinks a lot, it's not a big deal. It got just transferred from a bank account to a a letter of credit. But what you are seeing is the blue line keeps increasing. This is basically deferred projects. We're still bringing in revenue. We're holding on to some things. But we have a lot of big ticket expenses coming. Roads. The bathroom project, a few other things that they're all going to hit September, October. And that's when the bills will come to. We have a few other kind of larger items out there. So I expect that blue line to come down. It shouldn't be a dramatic change, but that's just giving you a sense of we're getting money in, we're kind of holding on to it. And just because a lot of projects have been pushed later in the fall. And that's good because if it was raining this hard, a lot of the projects would be delayed anyway. But that's a statements position is actually in pretty good shape. One of the things that we are thinking about into Louis's point, I did a quick, quick math off of our budget. It's not all the trial balance accounts. But we have in restricted revenue, or I'll say of that a little over eighteen million, nine million is in specifically restricted and committed revenues or reserves. Some of them are emergency reserves that can be tapped for certain events. Others are committed to certain projects. And that basically the restricted revenue for the one percent sales tax, there's about a million dollars sitting in that. That is for trails and and really our buffer for transportation. We started building that up last year. In the general fund, there's about four million that's tied to affordable housing, taper, emergency reserves and strategic reserves. And those kind of hit two different types of projects or or things that come up within a year or over multiple years. So and then the wastewater fund and the water fund are both wastewater fund has, and this is not the plant, this is our own collection system within our pipes is about three and a half million or or three point three million. And then the water fund is only about eight hundred thousand. That was a little short of where we'd like to be for if we have to drill a well. And then we have things like our capital asset fund and capital equipment replacement fund. And those are funds that like buying vehicles, replacing different things, our streets. Those don't have reserves tied to them. They pull from the general fund through a transfer process. So.
Okay. So how much is left in general funds that are unrestricted then? Because this looks like, this looks really good, but it's, it looks like a lot of this money is tied up and already being obligated.
Sure. The finance side of me says, I don't want to tell you because it'll change. Yeah, it'll change. But we probably have about four million in like savings that is general fund unrestricted.
Okay.
That is, we've been building that up over the last couple of years, mostly through that that delta with sales tax.
So maybe in your subsequent reports, could you include that as a separate slide, maybe, or or a table, maybe?
I think so. I'll work on that. They get a little bit muddled and it'll take wild wild swings because that general fund where we have that. I'm going to put basically a big chunk of that into the capital asset when we want, when we need to go pay for roads and such. So it'll move around quite a lot. That's what I was trying not to.
That's fine. It doesn't have to be exact. It's just kind of nice to track that, at least. Me and I see.
Next slide. And here's the sales tax one. We got a little bump up. This is for the month of June. So it was, we received it in August and it shows up in July as far as a number, but it's really reported for June. So we had mud season and now we're getting a bump back. We're trending above last year, which is good, a little higher percentage than it was the two prior months. And this goes back to that, if we look at things four years ago. And now we, this is the Covid impact and the collection of additional revenues. And people living here more frequently, we're seeing more and more of like, not necessarily restaurants, but it could be the Amazon deliveries, the Home Depot deliveries, the you know, I'll say home improvements, supplies and stuff like that. That kind of stuff is percolating up right now during building season. And and getting into that is top twenty contributors for sales tax.
You know, I don't know if it's in my imagination or not, but it seems like there's a lot more mountain bikers around now. And with the national championship thing going on at the resort, so I'm just wondering if that's really going to bump up our summer business. I mean, I, there are a lot more mountain bike trails that have been cut up in, you know, up in the national forests and stuff. Seems like it's getting busier.
A chunk of that is that one percent restricted revenue for sales tax goes to the headwaters alliance, which then funds a lot of the trails and development within the valley. Looking at our sales tax, we are definitely seeing more activity in the fall months. And I'll say as much from mountain biking as you would see from snow. People have come further past the resort. I think for the trails and access to the forest lands around us.
Good. So you do, do you foresee twenty two twenty two to look more like twenty one and twenty than eighteen nineteen?
Right now, most of, most of the other communities in the mountains and I'll say even in the front range where, and I'll say French range seems sees less seasonal sales tax impact. They're mostly predicting double digit sales tax growth for next year. That's what they're building in the revenue models. I would probably use twenty twenty one as a better metric right now. We're getting tons of variance, so it's, it's, I'm throwing a dart at a boarded guessing, but I wouldn't want to overestimate it. But I will say twenty twenty one, our projections were more in line with two thousand nineteen and there was a big bump. And I think that's where, you know, hey, we budgeted for this, but we brought this in. And and I would rather be more accurate in my budgeting if I can. Sales tax is tricky. But I think it is something that there are some other metrics we can look at. But yeah, I I was like, really? You're saying twenty percent increase? Are you, are you sure? And so I'm interested to see what happens in the next few months if that story changes.
So it's long range. Do we have a long range forecast for this winter that we know of terms precipitation?
Yeah, the two versions I've heard is we've got this rain, it's going to stay wet and therefore it's going to be great snow. And then I've heard the other version of we get an average amount of rain every year and we're using it all up now.
Because if it's a good snow year, it'll be a good year.
Sounds like a long range for range forecasts.
Yeah, and I think a part of it is the, does the snow come early? Or is it coming much, you know, later and trending later? And so we have a bigger spring, which is great, but if it doesn't come early, then people aren't doing those holiday bookings. And that's, that's the trick.
That's right.
Yeah, that's exactly.
The Monday night game.
So how does that affect our public works expense, you know, removing, we get a lot of snow this winter. Do we, you budget for that? I mean, how do you?
Well, there are two pieces. There's well, technically three pieces. There's the equipment side, the labor side. And then the, if you really are getting crazy amounts of snow at the hallway piece. You know, more snow means more wear and tear. Last year, the snow was dispersed and we were short staffed, so that was, it worked out. But it's a it it's whether it's just how early do you get up? How often are you plowing? Is the snow coming overnight? Is it going through the day? We had a lot of, it would dump overnight and then be clear for the day. We only had a couple of days where it was really like snowing throughout the day and between the county and the town, you know, you could only plow so many times before before it was done. And so there were lots of times where you would plow and then the road had another four inches of snow through the day. And that only happened a few times, but I think it's the bigger risk is, you know, if there are cars that have gone off the road or something in in the way, damaged vehicles, damaged equipment, that kind of stuff. If the, if the wing breaks off the plow. So.
It depends.
Yeah. Lots of factors. I mean, I think right now we're in a good spot in that we have nine of ten equipment operator positions filled and an offer out to attempt. And that's last year, the equipment operators were at six. So, you know, it's, it's just, how much, how much service can you provide? And the last slide is just questions. Any other questions? And the last slide is just questions. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. You're an excellent addition to our staff. Thank you.
Okay, next is the industrial pre-treatment program and that's Joe.
And I am at a loss. Um, some of you were privy to the information provided at the J F O C meeting. I'm not sure uh where you want me to go with this. We had the program. Uh, the results of the program, uh, I was not in favor of. I don't believe the results. Uh, all three entities are going to do some more testing to shore up the results.
And the results from?
I'm sorry.
Tell me the the results from what?
Uh, results from sampling. We are currently sampling uh our individual meter pits. I guess I'll start at the beginning here. We have a problem with breweries and distilleries, I believe. Uh, we hired a firm to uh do the study. Uh, they came back, uh their results to not think that those are an issue. Uh, we did a pretty limited amount of sampling and very few of the businesses turned in their surveys. So it's uh the loads and the amount of sludge that we're seeing down at the wastewater plant says we have a problem. So in all of this, uh, since we have differing opinions, mine and the engineering firm we hired, uh, we're going to do some more sampling to try to pinpoint the problems and or issues down at the wastewater plant.
I I wasn't at the J. I wasn't at that meeting when it became F O C, but to Parnell's, you you made a comment a few meetings ago around taking that the weight, the waste of the sludge or whatever, using it for feed for farmers and stuff. Is there a way to create a program or help support that? Or would you, would it be? Man, it's worth something to the farmers, right? They would be willing to pay for it, at least something that could we, you know, kind of balance it out.
Yeah, they don't necessarily pay for it, but they haul it away.
So they would haul it away. Well, that would, that would essentially pay for, you know, fix the problem, right?
Uh, there's uh more to it than just the grains that they're using to brew and distill. Uh, a a bigger portion of the problem is their liquid waste. Uh, most of them during the survey and our walkthrough uh indicated that the solid waste is being hauled off. Uh, the liquid waste is what's causing us the issue. Numbers for a standard house, household, one family household, uh, their number for B O D and suspended solids is around two hundred to two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter. Uh, some of the results that we're seeing down at the plant are eighteen hundred milligrams per liter for suspended solids and eight hundred milligrams per liter for B O D. And that's uh as it is from two hundred to eight hundred, you know, four or five times what we should be seeing.
Okay, so it's liquid, but it's heavy liquid. It's, it's not
Yeah.
like regular waste.
It's uh some places ten to a hundred times stronger than standard household waste.
So for the breweries, would that mean they have to go through some kind of a filtering before they were to put that into the system?
I, I believe that the ending of this all studying and everything, that will probably be the end result.
So I was at the J F O C meeting, as was Eileen and 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 Philip. The GeoSynTech study uh showed a couple of isolated uh instances where we had elevated levels of B O Ds and solids in the water. And they actually referred to those as outliers. Uh, but the sampling schedule doesn't necessarily correlate with uh with what Joe is seeing on a daily basis down there. We've been alerted to this. Joe's been alerted to this for a number of years and has uh wanted to address this. So the concern we have with the GeoSynTech's study is uh they're basically saying, no, you don't have a problem. Uh, and it's not the brewers and distillers. We have other evidence saying that it is. So um they presented a final draft or a draft of their study and they would like to get it uh, you know, stamped off and approved as final. Uh, we would like to hold off on doing any kind of approvals of that, not just Fraser, but also Winter Park Ranch and in Grand County number one. To do additional sampling, uh, to see if we can't pinpoint what the problem is because we've got GeoSynTech saying one thing, we had an E Q R study, it says something different and then we have what's going on at the plant. So the problem is not solved yet and approving the plan at this point sets us up for a uh possible legal battle and could prevent us from taking any kind of action should uh additional testing come up. Uh, especially if uh if one of these industries said, well, you paid for the document, it says we're not the problem. You know, so we, we need additional resources. We need additional testing. We have ordered some additional sampling equipment. The managers and I will be meeting on Monday as well uh to discuss what that sampling looks like and some of our next steps as well. I know that uh GeoSynTech made several recommendations in their report. Uh, and one of those recommendations was a uh uh plant optimization study. Uh, we're debating that. Uh, there's some, I think there's some pros and cons either way, but before we spend that money, we'd rather do the sampling as well. One of the fears we have is the uh, the day to day data that that Joe was seeing at the plant is showing these elevated levels of these solids in the B O Ds. So our discharge permit there is is based on a couple of different things. One of them is the amount of water that flows through and and our plant is rated at one point nine million gallons per day. And we average about seven hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand gallons a day. The other part of that is the amount of B O Ds or suspended solids and we're exceeding that level. Uh, and and if we exceed that level or if we start approaching what they call the eighty percent range of our capacity for those B O Ds, by state law, we have to be designing a new treatment plant. We're not quite at that point yet. Uh, if we, we feel that if we can resolve the issue with with what's causing the elevated suspended solids and B O Ds, we can kick that can down the road because upgrading the plant could be twenty, thirty million dollars or so. And that's not a very good option for us or the other districts as well. So we are, we're talking about doing at least, at least six months of additional testing. Uh, we are going to do some pinpointed testing as well. Uh, but then the whole idea of this is is really to get better confirmation and better alignment on what's causing the problems now at the plant.
Did I summarize that? Echo Ed's uh comments. Now I've been operating that sewer plant for twenty plus years now. And I really keep track of the flow. And over this twenty year period, our average flow when we first put it in service was about six hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day for the three hundred and sixty five day average. So if I took out the I N I periods and low flow periods, we averaged six hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. We have sold plus or minus pretty close to about nineteen hundred taps. And our flow, water flow that I see with fixing of infiltration is seven hundred and twenty five thousand gallons per day. So that in my world, it's not very much. It's only a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand gallons. But our organic load has quadrupled. Uh, right now, uh, just with the finance part, uh, my budget for sludge, I have spent over eighty percent, closer to ninety percent of my budget for sludge handling in less than six months of the year.
Now, has that significantly increased? Since the breweries were put in?
Yes, and I have put out a call to the company that handles our sludge. And for the records for the twenty years, uh, part of our shortcomings on our study with GeoSynTech is I provided them the sludge handling data for fifteen years. All they plotted on our graph was a ten year period. And I honestly have been complaining about this and having it for the managers, all respective managers since two thousand and seven is when this issue started arising for me down there.
I mean, so can't you track that by time? You know, you have the measurements, right? Every, over the years and when the breweries came online, couldn't you kind of track that and match that up with?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, and I have.
You can see her run through that same day.
That, that's kind of why I don't agree with the results of our study.
It's all, the measurements they're taking has to be when, you know, at the end of fermentation process, when they dump the sludge and and what, you know, you sample in our other days is not going to be, not going to be high, right?
No, our, and the way we do our sampling uh for the plant, everything is a flow based sample. So if I have X amount of gallons coming in, I got to catch a sample representative of that amount of gallons on, and it's over a twenty four hour period. Uh, the samples that we have been taking uptown at the meter pits, uh, they are quantitative based. So I'm picking a number of say three hundred milligrams per liter and it samples it every hour on the hour, it catches that sample. And that's for a twenty four hour period and the results that I take down to the lab, it is called a composite sample. So I have done grab samples which are, you know, instantaneous. And the B O D on those has been up over three thousand milligrams per liter.
But you, you can't isolate a brewery. It's kind of mixed in with everything else.
No, we, we, hence why we're buying the other samplers and yes, we can isolate.
Okay.
We can position a sampler above them in a manhole and below them in a manhole. And quite a few of them have no services in between above and below. So.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Let the investigation continue.
Pretty much.
Okay. Thanks, Governor. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the.
So can we close the door? It's getting a little smoky in here. I don't know if you can smell it, though. There's a lot of smoke going.
Started a fire on me.
It smelled. I have a sensitive nose and I'm smelling it.
I think it's coming like this.
I walk in the house.
No, it's fine. I was getting smoked, but I thought it was hot, so I was dealing with it.
I'm sorry, Joe. Where was one more question? Eileen wants to know if we should stick with Jo.
I, I'm sorry, I did.
GeoTech? Should we stick with them? Are we wasting uh time and money?
Uh, as I echoed, uh, we're going to have a meeting this Monday with all the managers. Uh, I probably am not the best person to ask that question to. Good. Uh, no, I, I, from my perspective, I would say no. But uh, there's other parties involved here and I would rather trump and answer this on Tuesday. I guess would be my better way to put it.
The other thing is they talked about C O D.
Yes.
And what is that?
Uh, C O D is a chemical oxygen demand. B O D is biochemical oxygen demand. So what we do is uh fill up a bottle with the liquid sample, uh, add a little bit of seed, uh, measure the oxygen in the bottle, uh, put it in an incubator. Five days later, we pull it out and measure how much oxygen is left. And there's a little bit of multiplication factor there and that tells us how strong. Uh, the C O D is, we take the sample, uh, kind of guesstimate how strong it is. And then we mix it with some chemicals that, and it's mercury and iodine and some other stuff. It heats it up and oxidizes it. And we measure those results difference. It's a very quick test for the C O D.
Thank you.
The next is housing needs assessment recap. Good evening, trustees and mayor. I will pull this up real quick. Uh, can you make me a co-host? I got dropped and I'm getting back on. So the, the top right of my picture.
That looking good up there.
All right. So good evening. Uh, what I'm going to do is present uh the updated presentation that receives from Willa Williford, who conducted the housing needs assessment study for the Fraser River Valley Housing Partnership Boundaries. So you'll see that in here for Fraser, uh, Granby, Winter Park and unincorporated Grand County. That is within those boundaries. If you're anyone generally familiar with those boundaries. So all the numbers in here for the general numbers will cover those boundaries and then we have some chart sources broken down. Um, a really good way to think about this is a um from an audit perspective. Second here. Um, if you think of this report as a, as a formal audit that's done to see what the, the place and time um current situation is regarding affordable housing initiatives, challenges and different things that we'll cover. Uh, the purpose of study was to inform on housing policies, uh, educate about housing issues that are currently in this, within this, this um region and uh support access to financing for projects and programs. So what I mean by a formal audit, it is informative, but it also does work very well for future grant funding requests, uh, when we actually have justification through a formal document such as this.
Very informative.
So a lot of this is things that a lot of us already know. I will kind of just kind of stick to the highlights and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. Um, whether it's from this presentation or from the actual full study. So their overview of this, they studied the dynamic, the demographics and the economic, economics of this housing situation and the challenges. Uh, current housing costs and availability, uh, the capital gap, return on investment on uh increasing the amount of uh full-time residents living in the area through housing. Um, different housing programs, obviously the challenges and the current demands and and recommendations for next steps. So for this process, um, Willa and her team did site visits. They did a lot of employer and stakeholder interviews of local businesses. I believe that list was somewhere around thirty stakeholders throughout this region. Uh, that included business owners, um, nonprofits, uh, different people who provided a a very diverse group of people to discuss this challenge with and to get their input from. They also worked with a lot of realtors. Um, and from this information, they're able to provide some bulk data from which they were able to pull some analysis from. So current landscape, obviously there's a shortage of long-term rentals. There is a lack of housing inventory for long-term rentals is kind of the main, the main theme of this study. Um, current market rate housing is out of reach for local workers. Had a lot of experiences with increases in inflation and building costs. And um, those have provided challenges and we'll get later into this presentation where they actually break down the cost per square foot for construction for the last three years. Oh, and that, just that last part is construction can't keep up. So it's um, as anyone knows, it's trending on the, any kind of renovation or home, trying to get a contractor to show up and do work is very challenging. And consequently uh affects the challenges that we, that we see. Uh, for sale market right now, um, these color sections kind of break down different um housing units based on their pricing segment. And twenty twenty two, you can see that the gray area for the million dollar plus, plus properties have gone up um for home sales that we've seen. And here's where I was referencing for the price for square foot for new construction has gone up uh pretty significantly. I remember when I first got here and I was like, wow, three hundred a square foot is a lot for new construction. And uh, you've seen that these challenger also met with uh high H O A fees because they do need to maintain. And, uh, you've seen that these challenger also met with, uh, high HOA fees because they do need to maintain a lot of these different areas. Uh, cash offers, um, outweigh, outweighing the buying ability from locals who are using financing and, uh, bidding wars as well. So the rental market, uh, these are the twenty twenty-two conditions. Um, it's very rare that you actually have a vacancy when somebody advertises for a long-term rental. Um, and a lot of us see this on some social media posts and things. They typically get a lot of responses. It's fascinating to me when people, what people are posting certain types of homes for, for long-term rent and how many people are actually really interested in paying that monthly fee for, um, for that rent. Um, obviously a high demand with the low supply. And, uh, and we've seen dramatic increases in asking rents that is in line with inflation and different things like that. Um, and from the study, the greatest need needed was actually one-bedroom units, which is interesting. So, uh, average asking rents, this is what we're seeing. Um, one bedroom, sixteen hundred dollars, two bedroom, twenty-seven hundred and three bedroom, forty-five hundred dollars. So loss of housing, um, so currently nine percent, uh, from, from their study, nine percent of Grand County, uh, resident renters, um, they have been displaced to long-term rentals, uh, convert, converting to short-term rentals. Um, and I think from what we've seen in the last, since the twenty twenty study for the mountain migration study is that, that kind of offsets the increase that we've seen in second homeowners, um, using their homes. So just something to see there, um. I think that's kind of come back to an equilibrium. So we have an increase in remote workers, which is great for, for full-time residents. And we obviously had the, uh, East Tropes and Fire that destroyed thirty, three hundred and eighty-four homes uh, in areas of Grand Lake, which has led to other housing increase and, and competition here in the county. So this, the, the, the demand right now, um, they did break down the short-term rental, monthly revenue demand. Uh, long-term rental, monthly revenues, um. So when you compare the two, uh, there have been some, some increase, some, you can kind of see why some homes have been converting to the short-term rental. Um, where the market rate, uh, we're seeing what the, um, kind of the new range for median prices and, and max prices for local buyers. Um, so local buyer market is typically in the five hundred or less range. Um, while a lot of those market rate homes have been going for well above that. So we have seen since twenty twenty, uh, twenty-one percent increase in average sell price. They were able to pull this with the, uh, the realtors and, and this, this group of realtors that they work with. Um, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, twenty-one percent increase in the sales price. Um, while the local workforce is, is seen, uh, a, on average, a six percent increase in their salaries. Uh, and on the right side, about one in three households in the Fraser, in the valley, uh, they pay more than thirty percent of their gross income, which is a really good baseline just to be responsible financially, but also that's what uh, HUD uses and the Vision of Housing uses for, um, when they're calculating area median incomes for what types of products people can afford. So the total workforce housing units needed, uh, so they do a five-year projection on this. They, um, there's some questions about why they don't do more than a five-year projection. Uh, they say it's just, it's hard to be anywhere near accurate if you do anything beyond five. Um, and, uh, so this is what they stuck to. So looking at seven hundred fifty-five to eight hundred and forty, um, units needed within the next five years. Um, the price points needed for the for sale, you can see that on the left-hand side. And the price point needed on average for rent is on the right-hand side. So you can see from the previous numbers that we saw for what the market rates are going for their one, two and three-bedroom long-term rentals significantly above that eighteen hundred costs. So here is the Housing Needs and Gaps Assessment. So these are summary of housing units needed through twenty twenty-seven. Uh, the catch-up need, um, is about four hundred and fifty units. The keep-up need for the next five years is three hundred and five to three hundred and ninety. Um, so from the catch-up in addition to what we'd need, um, based on the current, uh, jobs available here in the valley is seven hundred fifty-five to eight hundred and forty. And we currently have, uh, within this region, a hundred and twelve units under construction. And this is just a breakdown of some of the different areas that are, are building somebody. I know that's, well, PD Meadows. Their, their, um, Lytec expires. I believe this in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-eight. I have those numbers in my head and I have twenty-five. That sounds right. Um, so once that, we, we've actually asked them about this and they're not sure. Um, we expect those to go market rate, but they could apply for another Lytec project, which we were encouraging. And, uh, and see if they're able to uh, get another capital investment from the state in order to keep it affordable. So we'll see what happens to that next couple of years.
And it has to do with land use also. Was there something you hear about the town could address? So there wouldn't be a change in use of that land? Um, anyway, down the road.
We, we can get there. I'm not sure what you're referring to, but maybe we can get there and figure it out.
The, the, I don't, never know how to pronounce it. Cosling. Coslick? On Maine?
Coslick?
One love. It's supposed to be four. And it's two here. And it's in these documents, I found it three times as two.
Um, and those are the deed restricted.
Right.
Homes. And I, from my conversation with them, I believe they're from what I understand, and maybe Ed, you can confirm, but they, they were planning on doing all twenty other units for long-term leases through master leases with local businesses.
Right, but then there's the deed restricted.
Right. Should be four instead of two?
Twenty percent of one is four.
Okay. Okay.
Doesn't make much difference.
That's two years.
Two to four?
Two years.
He's restricted years, that's a lot. We don't have any right now.
Alright.
That's good.
That's what's in here. That's in the chart.
Six, many? Sixteen in the first phase.
That's what's on here. Yeah, he's in the old town apartments here. I think he's got a new name by now. What is it called? I don't know.
He called it old town apartments here, but it's probably the different.
Old town, middle apartments.
No.
Just around the corner.
Um, so this is the five-year residential projection for construction for market rate residences. And the projection for deed restricted. Um, we have one thirty in here, um, to include what we're anticipating between, uh, Coslick and from, um, Bull's Lake and from Victoria Village in the next five years. Hopefully we're looking at more than that. Um, but this is what we have. We are not sure about future annexations just yet. But, uh, we're hopeful, but this is the number that we, we, that we provided with them, uh, just to provide accuracy at this given point in time.
I don't know about here, but the rest of the country is down twenty percent. Build it. Just stop building.
Shouldn't the unincorporated valley be sixty?
Good, then we'll have people to build our product.
So are the units that they're building up at the resort, is that in here too?
It's, it's in here. I talked to Willa Mina.
Willa?
Willa. I talked to Willa and they're in there. But they're only being built for the, uh, staff they expect to expand. They're just, they're planning to expand that much. So the resort, it's not anything additive to the whole.
So it's not going to take away?
Oh, because they're going to add more people.
They're going to add more people to fill those. So it it's kind of.
Okay, I was just thinking if uh, re- resort employees lived here, would they be moving up there once that gets completed?
So I understand.
Well, then some of them.
Three hundred and thirty-plus beds, that's what the banner says.
Yeah, but who are they for?
For the band.
For their games. Seasonal.
I'll make the notes for the, uh, again, this is for the presentation. Um, I do want to check to make sure it's an actual study and then update the presentation before we upload it to our website.
I have a question about parking, the cost of parking. On-ground parking is ten thousand. And our ramp is forty thousand. Wh- what does that include?
It's a good question.
One page of your own.
What was it?
Um.
Thirty thousand structured parking.
Oh, thirty thousand, okay.
Thousand for one service parking space. Structured parking.
Oh, well, okay.
You're not there yet, but.
I'm sorry.
We're not there yet. Okay, though.
I reserve my question.
I will try to answer it in a few slides. Um, community benefits are obvious, uh, more residents, um, increase in local expenditures and reduce vehicle mileage for people, uh, commuting to their work. As you may know, we have a, a couple individuals that drive pretty far to get, uh, they have one, uh, that travels from Kremlin
To work here.
To work at the drop.
Recycle.
Yeah, so. And, um.
We have one from Sa- at Safeway from Kremlin too.
Yeah. Um, and then just, you know, looking at parking savings by different communal, uh, transportation options if you are local.
What is, what is? I still live here.
So within.
Is your biggest hindrance for one bedroom units? Because the units give it, does matter for better?
Right. So within this envelope, uh, the boundary is thirty, thirty-six percent of these market rate homes are occupied by permanent residents. And, uh, obviously, uh, hundred percent of the deed restricted homes are occupied by permanent residents. Um, it's estimated that eight point nine million a year is generated in total revenues, um, not tax revenue, but in total revenues. Um, in the, uh, the local economy from two hundred and twenty-five households. Reduced mileage. We talked about parking savings, Eileen. Um, ten thousand per one service parking space. I would assume that's considering the value of the real estate that that parking spot is on. Um, if you're looking at residential parking, you're looking at the real estate value of that parking space. Um, if you're looking at commercial value, you're looking at the commercial value of that parking space. That's where I would say they're getting that information, Eileen. And then thirty percent, you know, you're adding a lot more concrete for a vertical structure for parking.
Is that total per year or?
Um, I think that's just as, as a newly built parking space is my understanding of that. Other benefits, a lot of us are very familiar with these, uh, housing for essential employees. Keep those businesses fully staffed and get better service when you are going to those, uh, places of business. Stronger, more responsive services, uh, improves customer service and cost, cost savings on job recruitment and training, which is huge. Um, I think we can all understand that one. Hard to get employees if you can't house them. So one interesting stat here is, um, based on their, the interviews and information they were able to gather, about five hundred and thirty people turned down job offers in the past year because they lacked housing they could afford in the area. So, um, I think anyone who's on the business has experienced that. You get somebody who's interested in moving to the area and working at your place of business. And, uh, they actually look at Realtor.com or whatever they want to look at and, uh, sticker shock is real. Uh, we talked about more services. And, you know, something to think about too is we've had employees with the town, and I'm sure everyone's experienced this, who may have lost where they're currently living or they have that, you know, that basis of Maslow's Law of Safety, right? It's the foundation of just being able to do anything. And, uh, and operate as a human and, um, not knowing if your landlord is going to increase your rent five hundred dollars for the next lease agreement or converting to a different type, uh, maybe a short-term rental or something else, or selling up the residence. Um, it's something that we've had some employees go through as well, losing their housing. And, uh, you know, especially when you're looking at individuals who have a lot of years and experience and, and the value added to an organization that can be really hard to replace. So another emphasis on the cost savings for job recruitment and training. We've already kind of touched on this. Hundred and seventy employees left their employment this past year because they lacked housing. So recommendation, recommendations, hey, it's build more housing. That's, that's easy, right? Um, build some momentum that we're trying to build through different things that we're working with as far as, um, you know, the housing partnership that we're working with. Um, we're looking at, we're evaluating different funding streams that can be used for affordable housing. And, um, so trying to work towards that partnering with employers, um, increase dedicated funding, preserving existing inventory of the housing inventory. And, uh, promoting equity inclusion when we're looking at, uh, applicants for housing units in the valley. So that's the presentation. If anybody has any questions about the full study, I can, uh,
So was the second one, the full study? That we, we got two downloads. One was twenty-two pages and one was.
So the pres- was the presentation and the actual study, the, the actual study.
Was the second one.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
This is what's been published as the full study and I will check the, uh, the inquiries that we have from the presentation and make sure they're reflected in here before we post it to our website.
Okay. Where it was probably in the full study where it would have talked about Red Hawk.
Uh huh.
And and it had yes for deed restriction. Zero total. And I think the one above it also was questionable.
Right, and this is based on information that we don't know yet. This is for areas that haven't been developed yet. Um, it's hard to, to tell what, how things will go. A lot of that, a lot of times that will, I don't know much about the Red Hawk Ranch development. Or what the county, if, if anything is included, required for deed restricted homes there.
I noticed in a newspaper article, in the same article, it talked about affordable housing. Then later in the article, it said it was never meant to be affordable. So.
In Red Hawk.
In Red Hawk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's deed restricted at all, from what I've heard, but I don't know.
Well, this is, it is deed restricted, but then it contradicts itself saying it's second homeowners.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that needs to be.
So it's, that's, that's wrong.
That's market rate. Hmm? That's market rate.
Yeah.
Right.
And buyer's peak just above it says it's next.
Yes.
I bet it says zero on the bottom.
For known deed restricted, deed restrictions, yes. We don't know because these haven't been developed yet. Um, and I can, I'll look into the Red Hawk just to make sure this, this report's accurate.
What we know there is that it's sex.
Right.
So can we place requirements for new development coming towards to us about mandates for twenty percent deed restricted? And is that how it worked out with, uh, new project or how we end up with the twenty percent there for years? Okay. So it just that was an incentive. Right. Gotcha. Okay.
That's the solution to workforce output. That's right.
Yeah.
Something else can be solved. Well, changing weight to a unit.
That's up to me.
Hey, yeah, that's.
Thanks for the review of that.
All right, we will post this to our website.
All right, we will post this to our website, uh, next week. Yep, I will make those corrections and make sure.
Okay, yeah, that's a good survey. There was some, a lot of good information that was sobering.
Yeah.
Especially the cost of rents and how exponentially they've gone up since two thousand and eighteen. It's just depressing.
Well, we're below that. Four, these years.
The comparison of how much the rents have gone up and how much the salaries have gone up.
Yeah, hundred and thirty-six.
To twenty-one or something.
Seventeen percent something. Very sobering.
You guys did see the difference between a long drive and a short drive. Have you ever had a.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars.
About a thousand dollars a month.
You guys have closed them out much? That's for a month.
Yeah, no, definitely saw that. And that, what, the nine percent of the participants said they locked their homes? Because they were changed to short-term rentals.
Move on.
Right now.
I think we just finished the resolution.
Oh, so.
The.
How we need to discuss my reading path and the organization proving how we need to discuss.
So, um, we did a, we were awarded a grant. In the amount of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for, um, that the town was able to apply for and, and, uh, procure for the, um, for the housing partnership boundaries. So the study, uh, that we just discussed and went over, um, we do need to pay them. And, uh, this grant goes towards, um, that housing needs a study, housing needs, housing needs assessment study along with some founding legal documentation with the housing partnership. And what this resolution is, is we currently have invoices to date. Just over thirty-six thousand, um, we are looking at a closeout invoice here soon. Um, we're expected to stay within, not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, which is within our grant boundaries. So this resolution is essentially allowing us to pay Willa Williford for their work done. And, um, so that we can apply for reimbursement from, um, the grant program. Uh, they do not pay the invoices directly. I tried to work that out and it would not work out, so we do have to file for reimbursement once we pay these invoices.
So why are you asking for funding after they've already done the study?
So it's.
Why would we not approve this ahead of time?
It was approved ahead of time. Um, last, last fall, we were given, uh, November, we were approved to move forward with this, to apply for the grants and, um, and use these grant dollars. It's also outlined in our, our memorandum of understanding and our IGA with the other members, the housing partnership. Um, this is just a formality because, um, we're not allowed to pay costs over, uh, ten thousand dollars um, for non-budget items.
But if we're splitting this between three entities, it wouldn't be more than ten thousand, right?
It would be five.
Total, so it's like twenty.
Well, no, it's forty-eight of sixty-five, there's sixteen change left over. We split it three ways.
So it, it does require a twenty-five percent match for this, um, this initiative. And my battery just died. Um, and so twenty-five percent of sixty-five thousand is a number. And, um, that number will be divided three ways. So for the town of Frazier's portion for this project, it's going to be five to s- it's less than six thousand.
Yeah. But we have to.
All I'm looking for is approval to get reimbursed.
Require a resolution if it's less than ten thousand.
Yeah.
I don't care, I'll make a resolution to approve this, but I'm just.
Well, it's.
Right, I'll make a motion.
You're saying three waves? Isn't it? Five?
So the county, the county did not agree to be a full member. They are contributing, uh, ten thousand dollars for legal work. And, um, so Granby, Frazier, and Winter Park are the three entities that were split via the match for this study.
Can I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, oh, eight, oh, two? Approving housing needs assessment and legal.
All in favor?
Hi.
Town of Frazier's organization.
Correct. You have that on the, uh, that you can pull up on the screen.
I'm bringing this to the board. This is an organizational change that I feel is needed and within our just the town of Frazier organization. It's something that I've been a little confused on since I first arrived here. Our typical organizational structure, this is our current organizational structure. As you can see under the town manager, uh, of course, we have the assistant manager, finance manager, town clerk. Lost it, public works director, and then the wastewater treatment facility under the, the town manager. And I've always questioned why the wastewater treatment facility falls under the town manager rather than the public works director where they typically do fall. Because your public works department oversees not only your street operations, park maintenance and so forth, that also oversees all of your public utilities. And the wastewater treatment facility is a public utility, uh, just like our water treatment and our flexion distribution systems on. So we'll move to the next slide. There you go. And what we're doing here is we're going to put the wastewater treatment facility or the superintendent directly under the direct supervision of the public works director. This gives a little bit more unity of that, of the utilities, overall utilities management. Uh, because your public works director has the training and experience to oversee utilities. Uh, it also frees up the town manager a bit for, uh, to do either. I think I lost Katie there. To be the town manager instead of an operational director of, of one quarter of our utilities department. I wanted to present this to the board, uh, as the plan that we would like to go for. But there's a one factor with the wastewater treatment facility. When we, we had a wastewater, uh, uh, sanitation district, the Frazier sanitation district. That was part of the JFOC agreement. Their sanitation district was ultimately absorbed into the town. And the decision was made when it was absorbed to put wastewater operations under the town manager rather than the public works director. Not sure of all the reasons for that, uh, I wasn't around back then, Joe certainly was. And we've operated that way. But again, if we're using a functional alignment of how we're going to organize the operations, all public utilities need to fall into the public works director. So I wanted to present this to you, um, to get your feedback, to get your comments on that, maybe address any questions you might have or any concerns that you might have. I did present this to the JFOC last Thursday. Uh, the JFOC did not necessarily have any comments about that internal structure change. They asked about the public works director and I informed them that Joe is, is serving in a limited role as an interim public works director. They had some concerns about the amount of time requirements, uh, but I don't believe in that conversation. I don't recall them having any outright objections to that.
They were concerned about the extra. Uh, Joe's.
Already at capacity and how was he going to serve? Was there?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from you.
Fans drowned out in my hearing. I'm sorry. I was, I'm just relaying to the board, but the, uh, the two other partners were concerned that Joe was already at capacity, if him serving as in this capacity, but so I, that's definitely a valid concern from the partners.
Joe, that is a little, I, and I don't, I don't know if you there. That's a little outside of the organizational change. Since we've lost Russell and Catherine, um, I've been doing pretty much the full-time public works director job while trying to be the manager. While also doing all the planning coordination and so forth, I guess. It's taken time away from my job to be the overall operational manager and, and manage with the organization. I asked Joe if he would mind stepping in in an interim role, limited. Uh, it's very tailored to specific things like, uh, making sure that some of these, uh, he was involved in one the other day, uh, getting final acceptance on vicious cycle, making sure that, that everything had been completed according to plans. Uh, he did a great job of that. He's also been participating in some of my meetings, weekly meetings with Merrick. And Merrick engineers, we meet weekly to discuss ongoing town projects, development coordination and so forth. And he'll be participating in the, uh, in the, uh, baseline calls as well, just to keep track of how the development and how engineering is all working together. And be able to take some of that load off the meat as well. He is not directly supervising the streets and the watering and distribution side of that. I did have a long conversation with Joe before making that decision. And he agreed, uh, believe he has the capacity. And quite frankly, that wastewater plant is one of the best running facilities that I've seen. Geo-Syntec even made a comment about how well it is. Uh, Joe has been working with his people some of the ten years, uh, doing succession planning and expanding their capacity as well. So I don't believe that, uh, the extra little bit of duties as far as taking some of that off of my shoulders for the next two to three months until we have a new public works director. We're distracted from the operations of the wastewater.
And this new structure, you think is appropriate?
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh, some of the things that we're having issues with, uh, I and I, uh, is one that's on your else plate. This IP program, uh, I, I really believe in my heart that some of these would not have arisen uh, with more participation on my part than say public works.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, I'm I've got crossways on some of the stuff that I've done with this IP program and passed. But, uh, I do feel that the person who is your public works director and/or your utility director, uh, as water and sewer collection system and distribution. Uh, part of their job and their requirements is to protect you from the situation we're in right now. You know, not informing you as a board of the strength of water, what affects all these breweries and distilleries you're going to have on the town and your collection system and wastewater plant. Uh, that's, that's not a good way to be. You guys should have all been informed and not me coming in here fifteen years later and saying we have a problem.
Joe, you remember, wasn't it something with, when they formed the JFOC, that's why the manager.
There's, there was some personality issues there. I mean, that's, uh, the most, the nice, most diplomatic way was there was personality issues there. So it was best for everybody that I worked under Jeff.
Yeah, that was mine.
Yeah.
Do you think there should be, oh, sorry, for now?
I was just making sure it wasn't a legal issue when we formed the JFOC that the man who's supposed to be part of it.
No, there's, there's nothing in either our municipal code or the JFOC agreement that dictates how we've been on that memory to be buying.
I remember it being pretty confusing. Do you think there should be a date set now where you're going to push the du- these duties, or you just want to kind of go with like, maybe someday you'll not have to do all this work, or do you think there should be like a?
Oh, no.
They made that happen.
There's a day like.
Yeah, this was last week when I asked him to take on some of those.
Well, you're hiring for these positions, right? So as soon as someone's hired, problem solved.
That goes away.
Problems solved.
Yeah. I just don't want him to get burned out if it's continues like, oh, you know, eight months from now and then he's like, I'm out, you know?
Oh, I've been here for.
He doesn't have any place to go. He loves.
Yeah, I've been here for twenty-two years.
I, I know, but.
If I go, it's, uh, it's a full-time go to retirement when I leave. While we're working on a merit compensation plan right now.
What is WWTF?
Wastewater Treatment Facility.
That's kind of what I was thinking, but then there's also water wastewater superintendent?
Well, I, I don't like the naming nomenclatures either, but to call it a water superintendent when you're also in charge of uh, collections and distributions, this is just a whole name.
Gotcha.
And if you mix the wastewater treatment facility label with the JFOC, it becomes the joint facility.
Yeah.
His role becomes the operational manager, operational superintendent, and the town is the manager of the plant. So it's, it's, yeah, it's a little confusing when you get the JFOC.
There's a lot of hats here.
Right? Well. Do we need to approve the new organization?
Well, the reason I wanted to bring it up is because, you know, the perception of the, of Joe's role, my role with the JFOC. And, uh, I spoke to Philip about, about this and told him that I was going to the JFOC, which I did. I did address that, but also wanted to bring it to this board to get, to hear maybe any concerns you might have as well.
I don't have any problem with it. Joe doesn't have any problem with it. I don't have a problem with it.
I'm already out of here, so.
I'm good, I'm good with it.
All right, thank you.
Good job, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No.
So you don't want to stick around for updates?
No. I'm out of here.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
Oh, yeah.
Turn off the tune. Eileen's in charge.
Yep. Yeah. Okay, Michael.
All right. Well, welcome again. Um, so we are here at the third, uh, reading for this ordinance for the short-term rental registration fees and enforcement. Following the last board meeting discussing this, we, several, uh, changes were requested and have been implemented in this new ordinance before you. And just to cover those changes, to make sure that we're all tracking the same thing. The first change was to recommend the stair step for a hundred and fifty dollars per bedroom, per unit per year for the first year. Two hundred and fifty dollars per bedroom, per unit, per year for the second and third year. And then three fifty per bedroom, per unit, per year, starting the fourth and thereafter. The second requested change was replacing the local contact verbiage with property owner or property manager regarding contract. I'm sorry, contact information to be posted within the SDR property. The third change was, uh, change requirement for the property owner or property manager to be able to respond and attend to property problems uh, within one and a half hours, um, instead of one hour. That fourth change was to remove town manager or other designated representative to inspect the SDR property at random or following a reported concern and replace it with the emergency services for compliance with the ordinance. And the fifth one that, um, I have provided a note here was to remove the parking restrictions to default to the town code instead of restricting parking in non-driveway areas. Um, I did get some input from Chief Trainer. Uh, he says he has, uh, seen some examples here in the valley where, um, individuals will restrict short-term rentees from using their driveway, which is a, and, you know, that, that overflow goes to the route of, the right-of-way to the roads. And, uh, has caused some, um, some overflow parking issues in certain areas. I have, from his recommendation, I did include that verbiage in, uh, section N. And we can remove it, otherwise it's, uh, entirely up to the board of trustees if you want to use that recommendation, or if you would like to continue to default to, um, our current parking regulations.
I think we should tie in his recommendation.
I also do.
Because it doesn't talk about parking in their yards, it just says.
Right, right, we removed that part. So.
Right.
So that the actual code and the ordinance for section N does state that on page four. Section N. Um, a site plan showing adequate parking shall be supplied at time of application. Parking in private driveways shall be utilized first with overflow, overflow parking on the street if permitted. Occupants must comply with all town parking regulations. So we did keep out the section about parking in yards or landscape areas and things like that, which is more in alignment with our current code. But just requires them to use the driveway first and then use overflow parking in the street if it is permitted.
That's great. That spells it out for the property owner.
Any other comments? Are we in agreement with that?
Thank you, fine.
About parking in particular? So what happens, you know, if the signs say no parking between seven and ten A M, April, November through April or something? So if you park on the street, what do they do? They go around you? Do they plow through? Or give you a ticket or a warning or?
So it, it, it's typically reported to the police department. We've tried to handle this in a variety of ways. Um, and the way that we've come down to is what's legally enforceable and what we're legally allowed to do. And that is defaulting to police enforcement for that enforcement. So typically when there's a car parked there. Um, if it does become a, a regular issue, typically not just a one-time in place kinda thing. Uh, where they're obstructing how the snowplow operations are going and then you're potentially liable for. Snow pushing through someone's window and breaking their window or damaging their vehicle because they can't see the vehicle because it's covered in snow. Um, those are the concerns there and obviously just for regular traffic flow patterns to be able to, two vehicles coming through where there's a car parked kind of situations.
Yeah, I gave you most of the cars from the file and we did got buried by the town cloud, county cloud. It says they were illegally parked. There was no record. Go back to the county.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that again? I didn't follow that.
When I, the cloud, the county cloud, pile of cars in, you bury your cars, snow. If the people try to fight it and say, hey, you guys, my car, when you parked illegally, therefore you can't find. How they, how it works without the laws, what is that, they changed it or not?
That's a municipal court, I, I question, not, not a law enforcement.
Yeah.
There's legally parts that have. Something like that.
So, can I change topics? Are you, are we done with parking? The one right above it, the occupancy limit, I, is, is that the way it's currently written? So two people per bedroom. Plus four more people. I mean, where are the four other people sleeping in like in the kitchen or?
So.
What's going on here?
It's a good question. It's, this is not something that can typically be enforced. You can advertise that your occupancy is ten people and they bring fourteen people. Um, what this does is just encourage the occupancy to be at a regular. Rate. And I, I mean, I've stayed in short-term rentals before when I was younger and we would stay on this, the pullout sofa, which is not counted as a bed. Um, in our ordinance. You can have the instances for bunk rooms if you have a bunk room. You know, that, that can be different as well.
Just wonder if we should be silent on that, just say, you know, two people per bedroom and. You know, obviously this is the gray area, right? But when you say four more people, then it's like, oh, we can have six people or in a studio.
It could be their kids, family with children.
Right, understand.
Cousins, adults, the children.
So the studio is limited.
Is that pretty standard?
It is standard. I pulled this from about three different ordinances that uses this occupancy.
Yeah, but standard language.
Yeah, okay. It just sounds odd the way it's written.
The, the unit I stayed in at C M L. I think they said it, it slept six people. But I, I do, I had one bed, yeah, and up, yeah.
Probably under that bed was a mattress.
Yeah.
Well, it depends if you're like a Midwestern tenant or if you're, I don't know. And a hammock is longer.
And I have slept on the kitchen floor. No, it's been mentioned by several people about the people that only rent. A few nights a year. And I know that some of the towns and municipalities have a, a thirty-day cutoff. Is that something we wanna consider? Nope.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think it could be used as a rental for one night. So much easier to just period. You don't wanna rent it. It's not worth your time renting it for that night.
And it's no longer available for long-term rentals.
Yeah, I mean, the thing I mentioned that we. Where we added the South Carolina that they, it was for tax purposes, so if you, if you, it was owner occupied. Your tax rate was like half. If you rented it, it was double. So, but you, they put a clause in there, you could rent it. Less thirty days or less per year and not have to pay the, the higher tax rate, but it didn't exempt you from business license and fees and all that.
Yeah.
So where I've seen that reflected in ordinances, and I brought that in the first ordinance, we did talk about that, where if you met the conditions to be owner occupied. And you stayed within, I think I presented twenty-one days of nightly rentals for short-term rentals, then you could allow it. I do know, I do have some neighbors, for example, who do that. And when they go on vacation, they have the neighbor come and clean it for them and uh they go and they have some of their vacation paid for. There is, we, we were able to look at the software and validate. That we are able to see how many nights properties are short-term renting their units. Where it's not great out because of maintenance days, but actually is associated to a booking fee with a booking website. So we are able to track who's able to do that, not.
But you, you could still go under the radar by renting it to friends or something, not to a site, renting it privately, right?
Yeah, they do house walk.
Who's house is cleaning up to do that?
Exchange, you could do that.
Seriously.
When I used to do it, but you made a contact on, say Airbnb or V R B O. For subsequent years, you could just do a private rental and, you know, not go through the service, but anyway, that's beyond this conversation.
So there are, there are, there is language for that. Um, that I, that I knew know of, that I, I provided the first ordinance in the discussion at that time was. They didn't wanna deal with the enforcement of people trying to skirt.
Yeah.
The, the limitations of this ordinance and uh take advantage of areas, so.
Yeah.
But I, you know, it's.
Still like there's more violations later and we need to tighten it up. We can.
Right.
At this time, but.
And that's another advantage to the administrative fee is we do provide a warning to them once we are notified that they are, they have. They are advertising their property as a short-term rental. On one of the fifteen websites that are monitored by our software. And we provide them a warning and they have um. Ten business days. To correct the offensive action, otherwise the next administrative penalty is a five hundred dollar fine. And then another ten-day iteration for a thousand dollar fine. And then the fourth violation um is they can. Their permit can be revoked or suspended for up to one year and subject to penalties under our uh general code of violation. They can receive a summons to go to court.
Great. That's some good incentives to behave.
Well. And some of them were saying that there wasn't really an impact on long-term rentals.
Well, the study said there was.
Right, one out of every eleven. So, yeah, so.
Uh, we do have um more accurate sales ca- tax collection on the S T Rs here on this table and the staff briefing here. Where we're able to eliminate uh the um hotels. From that sales tax collection, so we have more accurate numbers for that as well.
So if they have to increase their price. The sales tax revenue is going to increase. And it may well offset the handle, the small handful of people that take them off the program. Because in order to cover our fees, that's expectation, that's why we give them a stair step so that they have the opportunity. To increase their prices in the future and pass that on to their tenants.
I think it's a fairly nominal fee, to be honest.
Yeah.
I do too.
And I, I, I'm still in favor of going, you know, one fifty, two fifty, three fifty, year, year, year. And that, I don't, I'm not sure I understand. I know that Brian, you throw it out there. To do two fifty for two years. I mean, why, why would you do that versus just make it over three years and seven, four?
I just see this as a crazy increase in, in fees and so.
It's a.
Well, if you go from.
Might make it more.
Six hundred to nine hundred to twelve hundred over three years.
Yeah, crazy increase in, uh, increase in.
You know, and if it breaks down to the number of living minutes.
It's a crazy increase because the fee was too low.
Any impact on the number of.
I would like to make a motion to pass this ordinance. But Katie's not here. Boy, till she comes back. The um, I think we've done a good job of making changes that um. You know, feel are necessary. I don't think any of us are ever gonna agree completely on what we should be charging. Be nice to charge more. If you're Brian, this could make it more palatable to some people. Um, and I have to kinda chuckle a little bit when I say, oh, we're gonna lose all these units. And I think about the gas station and they were gonna lose all this business when we put in those. Barricades on, you know, the dividers on Highway forty and I don't think they've lost anything.
Just created a traffic jam, that's all.
Yeah, create a traffic jam, but there's traffic jams anyway, so. Interesting.
I, I would vote for this if it didn't have the hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee, but I don't like that.
And I think that we need that and I think we need to keep that separate from the money that we're gonna dedicate to our workforce housing, attainable housing. That makes it really clear. That's just, that's just add them.
I just feel like this doesn't need to be the only thing that we use to get our lives.
Yeah. It probably won't be the only thing.
I don't think it's the only thing.
Well, I think the staff said that one, you know, the, each year, the amount of work is the same. It's not like it's a one-time review.
Right.
And the next year, they just sign off on it. They still have to go through all the paperwork and. Takes the same amount of time, so.
And we got Leslie who can attest to that, cause that's all she's been doing for the past week.
So I think.
How's it going, honey? Yeah, it's going. You're busy.
Did you make?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance four eighty-eight, short-term rental registration fees.
Is there a second? I second. All in favor?
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion, yeah.
Wanna voice vote? Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
Aye. This is forty-two.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much. It's been a lot of work.
Sorry to make you keep going over that again and again, Michael.
I expected that too.
I too.
Guess they like the stair step. No further comment after the stair step.
Good job, right? Good job.
So are there any updates?
I get some stuff for them and questions. I'm wondering, um. The update on the Victoria Village property, where I walked by, that's Eastham, the parking. Areas that the town created is awesome. If you walk by there. On a nice surface cover and nice signs. So thank you for, was in on that. Um, but I saw that they, their equipment was a little further out, not very far, but off the um, off of the parking area. And then I'm just wondering what's going on in that corner. What are we up to over there?
I don't know.
I saw that this morning. You talking about the uh, the skid steer with someone with a stick doing this kinda.
Yeah, and then. I don't know if it got stuck.
I don't even think it was one of our, our personnel. I was, uh, I meant to ask somebody about that today, but um, they were next to the power pole. So I assume they were doing something with that.
Somebody, but somebody else.
There was like four people out there in midday today too.
Okay.
It looked like they were cleaning something up. We have, you know, we have published the R F Q for this uh as of Monday. So we are, we do have some, a lot of interest, which is great.
Wonderful.
And we got some interest from some, some big heavy hitters too, who are, got a lot of resources.
Thanks.
Um, so don't be surprised to see people walking around that site.
Don't stop that.
I know, I was just thinking I should make sure that's.
Off limits.
Well, I have two. Um, one, upon by the Safeway, people reporting with a pile of water by the, from the dock that's there, something came. Someone wants to take a look at that. I was gonna go by the day and I forgot.
There might be something dead in there.
Like a fish.
Okay.
I had a meeting over.
So our water.
Aren't there someone living there too?
Well, I don't know.
So is that our wellhead?
Well, we do have a, our local transit that's camped out for the, in there.
Yeah.
I don't think he's dead, though.
He's got, he's got bathrooms.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is with the daycares in the, in the valley, both the rec center and the one back here. I feel that if you're kind of afraid of paying money, then working well should have first day on, or first option to have.
That's what I said earlier. I agree, that's.
I gotta say, I struggled on Monday with that really badly. I wanted to get my facts straight before I brought it up, but. I tried, I had to work at, at seven. I tried to go before then, then my mom tried to call from East Coast to pay with the credit card because it ended up with online. And I was at work at Sharky's and it was slammed and my kids were there, or my six-year-old was there, cause I had no daycare. And then it filled up by eleven thirty.
What's happening?
So I, I was on.
Is this the rec center?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Rec district and they hung up on my mom, my seven-year-old mother, when she was trying to, they were like, it's online only, click. So I had a friend come in for breakfast and we were on my phone trying to get the days I needed until December. Fifteen hundred dollars, which is fine for me, but imagine if you didn't have that kind of money at the time. So booking till December, right? Shortened thirty-day, like, I think it was like twenty-some days that I needed. By the time eleven thirty rolls around, two and a half hours after it opened up to the online only, those days were full. Through, through December, for after-school program and Friday rec program.
Huh, wow.
What's happening?
There's huge demand.
Second homeowners. Putting their kids in daycare.
So they can ski on Friday?
So they can ski too. And they book up the dates, so.
Or someone, I mean, who's booking these days?
We're gonna donate money or give money. I think we make part of the donation that. And, and it's a part of our taxes, how the rec center works. I'd like to see it's local, working local parents have per se. When their kids are good daycare and if it fills it up and there's no second homeowners, sorry guys, but if they can't get their good daycare, that's not my problem.
Are you talking about the rec center? Are you talking about?
Anybody.
Oh.
I, I, I'm trying to take notes, I'm not.
We talked about this with the, the one over here that we were funding. Turns out we were not really giving them much money.
Fifty thousand dollars.
That was a one-time deal.
One-time deal. But yeah, I mean, I, I agree. If we're, if we're giving money, we're contributing to their infrastructure and we should get priority.
The rec district should have like a grace period of like, give us forty-eight hours to get our kids in there. Give us five hours. You know, but two and a half hours when you're at work, when you try to go there.
Yeah.
In the morning before work, oh, it's online only, or it's, you can't come in person is what they said. I'm like, okay. So I call my mom and Michigan mom, can I get these days? Sure. It's online only. She's seventy. She's like, I really wanna help you, but I can't. You know what I mean?
But it's more than just cake.
There's a lot of people that are shut out with.
Lot of local parents that now don't have the insurance for their kids and their family and how it works and take care of them.
And for it to go on so long, to book so far in advance, like would have, and I'm blessed to have the financial means to be able to book that far in advance, fifteen hundred dollars worth. What if I didn't have fifteen hundred dollars at the time? What if I had two hundred dollars?
You'd be taking your kids to work with you.
Yeah.
We're all working.
It's nuts. Who, what kind of working mom has fifteen hundred dollars to buy a daycare? But let's build a, you know, maybe we can have our own daycare at Victoria Village.
Good.
Hear that, Michael?
Master planning process.
Okay.
Not a bad idea.
All right.
Those are your two. Anyone else?
I'd like to add on to what Katie said about the parking.
Oh.
Um, so the farmer's market's on Friday. I just add on to what Katie said about the parking. So the farmer's market's on Friday. And I signed up to do parking for the first shift from two to four. I don't know if we have a plan for that. Then, you know, do we have signage? Do we, you know, am I going to get like a little yellow vest or something official that I can? Yeah, whistle or baton. I don't know what I need, but.
I can answer that question. I had a conversation with Joe McDonald and our, one of our equipment operators and also with Sarah. Sarah and Joe have been working. There is a traffic flow and parking plan in place. Sarah will be there to the farmer's market. We originally were I think they were originally looking for volunteers and apparently they have you, so thank you for volunteering for that. I I just don't know how many other volunteers we have, but one thing we we want to avoid is the same kind of traffic jam that we had last month.
Well, hopefully we want to have a thunderstorm blow through there and blow tents down, but
Yeah.
But we need to have it, you know, some plan and some organization because last time it was just a cluster.
We have one.
Okay, yeah. I'll just follow up with Sarah.
One side of the street.
You're just a volunteer. Just do what you're told.
I'm going to have some authority, it sounds like.
Oh, you want that, you want the reflective vest?
Yeah, I know. Well, no, they were wearing them around at mural fest. There were a few people that had them and, you know, at least people knew who to go to. They had questions.
All right.
And I'm teasing you to.
Sounds like it's a plan. Any other update?
I was just going to bring up mag chloride, since the mag chloride, David, the mag chloride guy. I was talking with on the owners of the road street, you know, that little connector between Old Victory Highway and John's Drive, it's dirt. It's always dusty. Of course, it's been raining, that's helped them. But if we can collaborate with the county when they are doing the mag chloride on their county roads, if we could get them to fix that section.
I don't believe it's a county road.
It's ours.
And I, and I don't, and I'm not sure it's our road either. I think it's still parks.
It's still parks.
But can we somehow
I can ask him.
Make that happen?
I can ask him. That's about all I can do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if, and if the county's willing to do it for a little bit of a fee, but that would be awesome.
Can they do corona pass too while they're at it?
Our street trailhead opened too. It's been twenty years.
One day?
Awesome.
Oh.
Aline, I've got, I've got a couple of Okay. If if you subscribe to Sky High News and get their electronic version, there was an article that came out today that that deals with PFOS. And don't make me pronounce what PFOS is. But PFOS is a, is a family of chemicals, manmade chemicals that have been around since the nineteen forties. They're called forever chemicals because it can take centuries for them to break down in the environment. In two thousand and twenty, the town participated in a PFOS pilot sampling program. At the time, the EPA had set PFOS levels at seventy parts per trillion. And just to put that in perspective, one part per trillion is like one drop of detergent and enough dishwater to fill up a train full of tank carriers fifty miles long. So that's one part per trillion. And we were fine under the the old guidance. In June of this year, with the infrastructure bill that was that was signed, it also included reductions in that PFOS level. Now PFOS levels are and I'm going to break it down into two different categories. One of those categories, the the level is zero point zero 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 eight parts per trillion, which is almost impossible to measure. And the other one is zero point zero four parts per trillion. And and those are close approximation of what those new numbers are. But because of this change with the EPA, with with the limits for that, the EPA issued new health advisories. And those health advisories, pretty much every water system in Colorado is now above those levels. So it's causing some concern. There's been some articles in the Front Range, the Colorado, the Coloradoan, I think the Denver Post and several other articles have out there, have been published. Sky High News got it and they ran an article today and they highlighted Frazier. In that report, they said that we had some of the highest in in the county, which we don't. This is a test done two years ago and the one system that they looked at was one well, well, number nine, which quite frankly has not been running for the past year. Because it's down for maintenance. They only use it as backup and we're not using that because of the elevated PFOS at this time. Unless it's an emergency. The health advisory is not guidance. It's not, there's, it doesn't mandate certain actions. It's just a, an advisory that there's some, could be some possible health side effects or or health impacts for elevated PFOS. We're not alone in doing this. The only guidance we're getting is recommendations from CDPHE, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And they say continue to monitor provide information to the public and maybe provide information on alternatives. Because this is out there, there might be some questions being asked about our system. I've asked Lucas Seffens, who's our water wastewater superintendent. I wanted him to start doing testing every six months for PFOS. We're under no requirement to test for PFOS at this point. But I've asked him to do that testing. Working with Sarah on some messaging, we can put on our, on our website, some information, links to CDPHE and the EPA. And where they can get better guidance. But quite frankly, most of the communities including us are waiting for specific guidance to be issued from the EPA. So I just want to throw that out there because you may get some questions about that. And if you have specific questions, I'd be glad to sit down with you and try to pronounce pre and poly, follow, coro, whatever that term is there. That's the first update. The second update, I mentioned it a little bit earlier. We're working on a comprehensive plan update. We budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year to update our comp plan. Have any of you ever read our comp plan? It reads like a history book instead of a a plan for growth and development and identifying, you know, what's needed for infrastructure to meet our current and future demands. So I'm looking forward to publishing this probably sometime around September the sixth. I'll be trying to bring that to the board for review before I publish it. So we may adjust those dates a bit. The sixth is the day after Labor Day. I think our first board meeting is the seventh. And hopefully we'll have bids back by sometime in October and choose a consultant and get started on that process. So and I'm I'm characterizing this as a complete rewrite of our comprehensive plan because it certainly needs it. We need to address things like unit size. We need to address things like traffic flow and parking. You know, tourism industry here and future growth areas as well. Those are the two big updates. I'll just end it there. I try to put updates in my weekly report. I hope you appreciate that and getting good information from that. If you'd like to see something else in those reports, let me know.
Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, it's All in favor?
Aye.
Nay adjourned.
Alright.
We don't need it.